Good evening. I would like to start this meeting of the Gloucester City Council on November 12th, 2024. This meeting of the city council is recorded on Zoom with a link that is posted on the agenda. If you are calling in on a phone, you can press star nine to request to speak. If you are watching on a computer device, there is a raised hand button that you can tap or press to request to speak. Please use either of these options during oral communications to be recognized to speak. If technical difficulties arise and the Zoom link is interrupted during an in-person hybrid meeting, the city council and the city council has a quorum. The meeting may continue after efforts have been made to reestablish the link. The minutes shall note the interruptions. It is the finding of the Gloucester, of the city of Gloucester that no individual should be denied equal treatment or opportunity because of their age, ancestry, color, disability, including intellectual and developmental, mental disability, family status, immigration status, gender identity or expression, military status, marital status, national origin, race, religion, sex, or sexual orientation. Tonight, we have the city councilors. Dylan Benson, Ward Two Councillor. We have Valerie Gilman, Councillor-at-Large. We have Frank Majota, Ward Three Councillor. Four. Ward Four Councillor, that's right. We have Jeff Worthley, Councillor-at-Large. Marjorie Grace, who is the actual Ward Three Councillor. Sean, I mean, I'm skipping over you, Jason. Jason Groh, who's Councillor-at-Large, and Sean Nolan, who is the Council Vice President and Ward Five Councillor. Yeah, I just, I want to say we have, do you know who's online? Who do we have? Okay, thanks. So we have, in attendance, we have our city clerk, Grace Poyer. Then we have remote, we have Nancy Pappas, Tim Goode. They're the, with the Assessors Department. Oh, and Gary Johnston. Connor McCorkle, the CFO. Jill Cahill, the CAO. And we have Dana Martin, the engineer in person. Sorry about that. Busy gabbing and not getting ready here. Okay. So we will have the flag salute and a couple of moments of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
I'd like to pull a moment of silence for Bill Rochford. Bill Rochford was a great man in the city of Gloucester. He was an advocate for anybody that needed anything, whether it was home needs, transportation, or anything to help a family in need get by. He worked very well with the Action Shelter, with CADA to start that, and worked on anything that mattered. As a person growing up in Magnolia, you could always go by Bill's house, visit his family. Wonderful family, hard work, and he took pride in his home, taking care of it and working hard, and it was always an open door for anybody in need. And I'd like to take a few moments to give a moment of silence to Bill. I would like to speak on Joe Ferrante, unless someone else would like to take on that tonight?
So Joe Ferrante was obviously the dad of our state rep, Yemar Groffrante. He was a fisherman. He loved our city. He was always willing to talk about his experiences in the fishing industry, and he loved his daughter. And he passed away, and he'll always be remembered as a wonderful man with a great spirit, who again did so much for the city. So moment of silence in addition for Joe Ferrante.
All right. And now we will have oral communications. The public shall have the opportunity at every regularly scheduled meeting to be heard under oral communications on matters not appearing on the agenda. Oral communication shall allow any resident and/or property owner and/or business owner who has a request or complaint of any nature relative to city-to-city business to appear before the council, make their statement without debate, and the council will refer matters to the office of the mayor. Person speaking under oral communications shall be limited to three minutes.
Hello? Oh, it's on. Okay, great, thank you. Hi, my name is Catherine Goodick. A lot of you know me. I live at 10 Dogtown Road. I'm a lifelong Gloucester resident, and my husband and I have built our home up on Dogtown Road, and we've been living there about 30 years. My property abuts Dogtown Common, if you don't realize that. I'm one of two abutters. There's two homes on that road as you go up to Dogtown. Unfortunately, there seems to be some usage of the conservation land up there for detonating bombs, and so I want to bring that to your attention, whether or not you're aware of it. Several occasions since I've lived there, there have been the city police, the fire department, and a bomb squad driving up there and detonating bombs. We're sitting on one big ledge up there of granite. So if you think it's not impacting my house, I beg to differ with you that it is. Recently, I was on a flight coming home. My adult children were at home and texted me feverishly while I was on a flight, ruining my very nice vacation, I might add. So the house was shaken, there was explosions going around, and my daughter's hysterical. So in addition to that, on Facebook, there's a Gloucester sites thing, and it's all over there too. So it's not just my house, my neighbors. It's very loud. The pictures in my house are shaking. So it's not like it's some little explosion. It's really serious. And if you're not living there, so you don't feel it. But again, during my flight, I'm contacting whoever I have as city councillors, so I had two of them on my cellphone. I contacted both of them. I also saw that the chief of police is saying that it was fireworks. Trust me, I know the difference between fireworks and an explosion. Fireworks can be set off in my front yard, and they would not shake my house. I can tell you there are cracks going around my foundation in my driveway. It is one big granite slab. So to not get a response back is one thing. To be told that it's fireworks is also another thing. It's the failure to really be transparent on what's happening. I mean, I called the chief of police, and I'm told it's fireworks is ridiculous. So October 13th, the hills exploding, there's people down on Reynard Street talking about it. And as an abutter of the land, I am requesting and pretty much demanding that the city council or the mayor give me some clear explanation of what was blowing up up there on the 13th of October. It's not the first time, and I hope that it's the last time. I come each time to speak, and I don't feel like anybody at the city really understands the impact that has on my family and my property. So it seems like the information is hidden, and I think that the city should find another place to be detonating bombs versus driving them up in my back driveway. Thank you.
Thank you. And you did it. And all the drill.
Good evening. Mary Ann Boucher, 93, Mount Pleasant Avenue. I filed two public records requests with the city, one for the language of the Acts of Land Transfer in Gloucester, Chapters 152 and 284, Meadows Field to the East Gloucester Site that was signed into law, and also a request for the deed signed by Mayor Verga on April 1st of this year. I did not receive the correct information within the 10 business days, so I contacted Senator Bruce Tar's office and received the necessary paperwork within one hour. On February 13th of this year, a vote of the city council passed certificate of vote number 2024-018 and dated February 20th, 2024, to accept lands to be used for municipal park and open space purposes as set forth in Chapter 152 of the Acts of 2020 and Chapter 284 of the Acts of 2020, and was subject to the protections afforded under Article 97 of the Amendments of Massachusetts Constitution of the Commonwealth in perpetuity. A deed was witnessed and signed by Mayor Verga on April 1st of this year, 2024. Chapter 152 with six sections was approved with the legislative body, and on August 7th, 2020, amendments to Chapter 152 were made, and on January 7th, 2021, Chapter 152 and 284 was signed into law and known as the Acts of Land Transfer in Gloucester. I'd like to note some wording in Section 5, and it reads as follows. If construction of demolition upon the removal of any structures from the land referred to in Section 1, that's Webster Street, does not commence or Meadows Field within four years from the land transfers referenced above, then the care, custody, and control of the land in Section 1 shall revert to the Department of Public Works of the City of Gloucester to be placed under the protection of Article 97 of the Amendments of the Constitution of the Commonwealth. And the care, custody, and control of the land in Section 2, EGS, shall revert to the school committee of the city. EGS closed its doors in June of 2022. The building was going to be demolished last winter. Winter turned into the spring. Spring turned into this fall, and just a few weeks ago, during the Open Space Commission meeting, there was a mention of no date. I stood here on October 8th in favor of the mayor's request to approve an additional $2 million to increase the $4.2 loan order to $6.2 for the vote purpose of the demolition and leveling of the EGS building, as the $1.2 million allocated was used elsewhere, only leaving $73,000 available. The G D Times mentioned that the cost for demo had increased to $1.9. The concern, when does the four-year timeframe run out? When is the reasoning behind, what is the reasoning behind the stall? EGS closed two years and five months ago. Will the no net loss Article 97 swap not take place? I hate to say it, but it does feel intentional. Will this be, one more sentence, will this be passive open space that the city council you spoke of on October 8th, and will the city move forward with the demolition of the building? Will the city put the protection on the land, and will the portion of the Lieutenant Arthur Maxwell Parsons playground be returned as Mayor Verga stated on October 6th, 2022, letter to me, for the children? When transparency exists, so does trust.
Name and record for the, name and address for the record, sorry. Handheld, handheld. Nope, you shut it off.
Joshua Fishburne, 17 Beacon Street, Ward Three. I appreciate and value your civic leadership and your time. I want you to remember that there's a amazing teacher strike going on in our city. It's not on the agenda tonight, should be. The relevance of teachers' concerns and paraprofessionals are meaningful to our entire city. I would like you to remember the tenor and general sentiments of support for the concerns and living wages of our essential workers in the schools, paraprofessionals, teachers, people who every single day are in charge of the living welfare of our children. Whatever the opportunity, whatever the public forum, please acknowledge and express positive affirmation for the educators and paraprofessionals in our schools. This includes supporting them in their efforts to attain contracts and a living wage. As a parent of three children in the Gloucester Public School System for 16 years, I ask the council and the mayor to support the demands of paraprofessionals for an increase in wages. Thank you.
Hello? Hi, my name is Adrian Rickiman. I live at 42 Summer Street. I'm a firm believer in democracy, and I thank you for this opportunity. I come to you tonight as a proud citizen of Gloucester, a proud mother of two children in the Gloucester Public School System, and as a proud teacher at West Parish School. The last time I was up here addressing the city council, I was fighting for my job as a first-year teacher when my position was to be cut mid-year. That was in 2003. Now I am up here, 21 years later. I was hoping to never have to stand up here again, yet here I am. Teachers are creative by nature. We are met with complex issues every day. We ask to do so much with so very little. This has been a trend, and it has only intensified in the last few years. We cannot operate this way and should not be asked to do so. Please, I implore you tonight to do everything you can to fix this crisis within our city. Make our schools a priority. I stand with our teachers, our paraprofessionals who make poverty wages, our city, and most importantly, our students. I have faith that you will stand with us as well.
Michelle Genovese, 22 Blumenauv. I am one of those paraprofessionals that makes poverty wages. I have to work a second job in order to keep a roof over my head. There are many, many women in my union that do the same thing. They work the after-school program. They work tirelessly so that they can make ends meet. I don't feel as though any of my union siblings should have to choose between a meal and a roof over their head. We are out there making sure that the community that we live in has people to continue to run it, and yet the people that are running it are not helping us. I ask of you, the school committee, to speak with the school committee, reach out to them if you can, and help us stop this. These kids need to be back in their classrooms with us. We want to be back in the classrooms with them. Every day that we're with them, we worry about them, and we worry about them even more. Help us get back in the classrooms.
Someone else in the room? Okay, we're gonna go to the people online. We have Kathy Ryan. You there?
Hi, councillors. Kathy, 17 High Rock. I wrote the mayor, the CAO, DPW, and Community Development Directors, and I want to loop you in to, to alert them to more city-owned art damage. In the Committee for the Arts, monthly October 29th, two members mentioned damage done by the new restoration to the State Fort Park Tablet Rock Founder's Plaque conservation went awry, that the company engaged to do the work, quote, "didn't do green." Of course, it didn't do green. You may remember, I warned this would happen, was unnecessary, and recommended not to proceed. I first tried to speak about it at subcommittee before it came to the full city council, but was point of order and blocked from speaking, that it wasn't relevant. I emailed and received no response. I spoke up again when it came to full council and the CPC hearing, but the newly reconstituted Committee for the Arts went full steam ahead with funding, including ARPA funds. Bronze Restoration by definition removes surface. This Founder's Plaque was not on our list of the city's art most in need of restoration, but it was the target of a conflict of interest fundraising campaign. It's not reversible, you know, it's done. City art that didn't need any restoration was also damaged because of major undisclosed conflicts of interest. Murals outside Cairo's auditorium with an astringent that removed layers and layers of glazing. Murals at O'Malley. The Bronze War Memorial Plaque and the Rotunda were damaged and had to be redone, also a small one on Stacy Boulevard. A Ken Gore painting was damaged by a label rubber cemented to the wall, and you know when it migrated. A small plaque on Stacy Boulevard, I already said that. Regarding the city's historic mural holdings, an exhaustive and comprehensive conservation report was completed by Williamstown Art Conservation Center. Writing an RFP for a new one is a misuse of funds because theirs would be the penultimate assessment, and it was already completed and paid for. A scan of the full report was on the city site on the Committee for the Arts page as WAC and was removed rather recently. I urge IT and the city to make it available again. The murals awaiting care wrapped by Williamstown cannot be unwrapped for a new RFP due to more damage and health and safety concerns, lead exposure, and more. And remember, City Hall was just newly cleaned after fire-smoke damage. I said that the murals were rescued, and they were sent to WAC with prior $26,000 community preservation funds because murals had been damaged by prior restoration made worse by undisclosed conflicts of interest and lack of transparency. After storing, after storing the murals for multiple years without charge, WAC offered to store the murals there indefinitely for free, optimal safe and climate-controlled immaculate facilities as long as work commenced on one murals. I do have more to go. How much time do I have, Tony?
That's about it. Just wound down to zero.
Well, I'm gonna do.
I'll give you 15 seconds.
I appreciate that. I'm gonna just wrap up. It's actually just two, two points. I have repeated that resurrecting the artifacts committee for care for the collection wasn't my idea, it was a former elected official's idea, but I concur, would be optimal, and I recommend, I recommended further, split off the living arts to continue with the Committee for the Arts under the purview of Community Development.
That's it, I'm sorry, Catherine.
Okay, so I will do part two with the next one, and I'm happy to also make a report. Thank you.
If you want to submit something, send it to the city clerk.
Well, I think this is, this is the, this is the presentation on, on the city holdings and the inventory, and we've paid for six of them since the year 2000, and I was on the committee for years and know them, and you know, the information isn't being shared.
It was just an offer for you to send any remarks to be on the record.
Yeah, I will, but I'm also gonna finish up part two. Thank you, Tony.
Yep, okay, yeah, part two next time. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Pam Steele.
Hi, can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Okay, Pam Steele, 10 Pilots Hill. As you know, I've been going to public meetings and whatever since 2018. I've learned a lot, and I'm underwhelmed. I would like a letter from the mayor with a timeline of when they're going to tell the public what's going on with the East Gloucester school property. Thank you very much.
Seeing no more hands, we will, what's the next order of business, Madam Clerk?
Presentations, commendations. A presentation by Dana Martin, city engineer, and Eric Kelly, Principal Engineer of Apex Companies regarding an update on lead service line inventory.
I don't know. How can she share her slides? Oh. Because you can share via Zoom.
Like, a way to present on. Oh, I have to join?
City councillor tonight.
I can talk while I get this launched. I just have a visual I'd like to share. Of course, I need to update my Zoom. I'm Dana Martin, city engineer for City of Gloucester, joined today by Eric Kelly, our consultant from Apex Engineering. We're here to talk about a recent inventory we did for our water service lines as part of our drinking water distribution system. This is all part of the lead and copper rule, which is an EPA regulation the city is complying with. It required all public water suppliers in the country to develop a comprehensive inventory of water service materials. What I'm really hoping to share is a diagram showing what a water service is, because I think it's helpful to have a visual. We'll give it another minute, minute or two. As part of our inventory, which was submitted to the regulators last month, notification will be going out to water customers who've been identified as having either a lead water service, a galvanized water service, or unknown material of their water service. So in advance of these letters going out, we were just hoping to brief folks on, on the communication that they'll be receiving and helping them kind of understand that information a little bit better. Great, it looks like I'm here. Eric, do you want to?
Yeah, just so, just to clarify, Dana's gonna bring up a graphic just to explain what a service line is and where ownership responsibilities kind of begin and end for both the municipality and the property owner. A key thing to take away is that the city is compliant with the Safe Drinking Water Act as it pertains to lead and copper rule. There are specific treatment practices that the water system uses to prevent corrosion of metals such as lead and copper out of both plumbing in the distribution system as well as interior plumbing within buildings. So no treatment changes have changed all this. This was just a records request essentially through the lead and copper rule because of issues around the country related to lead exposure in older water systems. So the city has become compliant with the inventory, which was submitted in October, on October 16th to MASTEP. Now we are complying with the initial notification requirement that came out of that process. So this is the start of a over 10-year program that will be addressing lead and potentially other service lines that need replacement. I'll keep, so, and just terms of numbers. I'll keep, uh, so in just terms of number, overall numbers, um, the city has a total of 13,437 service lines. Um, so we looked at all the existing records we could get available to us made through the city. From that number, we had a total of 12 that identified as at least partially lead, 636 that have galvanized metal, which is the, the reason why EPA is looking at that is that historically those tended to be connected to lead once upon a time. So they're kind of a suspect material, if you will. Um, and then we had 4,639, uh, services where we do not have a record of a material, um, which I will say we're doing this work for about two dozen communities in Massachusetts. Um, the ratio of unknowns being that around 40% give or take is not uncommon because a lot of times that is a record of what is on the customer's side. There's a lot of good records on the public side, which is what the city would own, but oftentimes that record was not recorded. You know, some of these service lines go back to the early 1900s. Um, so I'm gonna turn it over to Dana just so she can explain the graphic and some of the other stuff.
I think this works. Okay. Uh, thank you. All right. So I'm hoping this helps folks a little bit understand what we're talking about. So, um, the water that we all enjoy um, comes from our surface water reservoirs. Um, it's important to note that lead does not come from your source water. It also isn't in the water as it leaves the plant. Really, your exposure to lead, if it's coming from drinking water, is from piping or plumbing within your home. So your drinking water travels through the city underground in water mains and from water mains, which are for the majority in your street. Um, it reaches your house from what's called a water service. Um, a water service refers to the whole pipeline from your water main in the street. It crosses your property line. There's this fitting right at the property line that's called a water shut off or, or curb stop and then continues underground where it enters your home. You, that's where your water meter is in your basement. Um, the city of Gloucester owns and maintains the water service from the water main to the property line, that shut off valve, and the rest of it is, um, customer owned or owned by the, the property owner. Um, historically, records for water services had a lot of notes on material and information for the side that the water system owns, so what the city owns, and maybe not so great notes about the customer side. Um, so as part of the inventory, if we had records on the material for what the city owns, but no note on the material on the customer side, well, now we consider your service unknown. And so those customers will be receiving letters notifying them that they have a, a water service of unknown material. And, um, we're now moving into a period of verification where we're really trying to, um, here, here's the numbers. I think Eric reviewed this. I'm sorry, I wasn't really listening. Um, here's the results of our inventory here. I mean, there's some really good news here. Um, less than 1% of water services were identified as lead, less than 5% as galvanized. I believe Eric covered, um, the risk of galvanized. Galvanized itself isn't dangerous, but it does have the ability to absorb lead if there was a lead source upstream of a galvanized service. So, um, those services are targeted to be replaced as well. Um, and of the 13, over 13,000 services that we inventoried, a little over 8,000 were identified as non-lead. So, so now our goal is to really tackle this unknown category, you know, that's 34% of our water services. And even though we may have data on the city-owned side, we don't have that customer data. And so, um, we need to sort out that number before we get into the period of, um, replacement.
Yeah. And one other thing to add is, um, it was prescriptive to, as to what records we could use for this inventory. This was not going into homes and businesses to physically verify. It was based on the publicly available records you had. So like the service cards, any water man, main plans that might've had notes, any water division rules and regulations. Some, uh, some communities had things on record that said, we stopped using lead as of 1956, for example, so they could kind of rule out anything that was installed after that. That's not normal. It was kind of more unique cases. So this really was a, you know, high level view. What do the records say? Pointed out what a lot of people expected. There would be a lot of unknowns. We are gonna transition to the verification. On the verification side, um, the city's focus is gonna be in a couple different approaches. Um, either the water division has frequent need to be in properties for water meter change outs, service calls, things like that. Those will be utilized to build out the inventory further. Similarly, inspectional services and housing staff are often in properties as well. They are gonna be given the same inventory as well, just so that we can supplement and slowly chip away at those. In addition, the state of Massachusetts has made a customer service line identification app available so that people can self-report. Um, it's relatively simple. You basically have to give them your address, what water, what city municipality you live in, and it's already been pre-populated on the backend that those, those, that information uh, will come back to the city, uh, water compliance office, and then that will be a new record that has to be checked. And so, so that's to help whittle away at the number of unknowns because most communities, their, their biggest issue is really resolving the unknowns. Um, similar, once that starts getting stood up, then it will become more a process. If folks have questions, they can call the water compliance office or email the water compliance office and schedule appointments. Somebody can come out and check it. Um, so that over the next three years, in accordance with the lead and copper rule, we have to complete the verification process, then it transitions to replacement.
A lot of information on this side, but this is just an overall general timeline because I'm sure folks are thinking, okay, well now you have this information. What's, what's next? And, um, we're currently in compliance with all regulations through EPA and MASTEP. Um, we follow all regulations related to lead and copper. We're currently in compliance. Um, we've done rounds and rounds of distribution sampling. Um, with no hits for lead, we're actually on a reduced sampling schedule. Um, and again, we've had no violations. Um, so we're still confident in our water, but we are moving into this phase of kind of verifying all the information in our inventory. And then, um, by 2027, public water suppliers have to submit a plan for replacement. So, um, we're, we're, we're getting the information out to our water customers as soon as possible. Um, but we're not yet in the stage where we have a approved replacement plan with the state or with the EPA. Did you touch on corrosion control?
Yeah. Who's role?
Who's role?
Corrosion control in our system. It's, I, I, I feel that's like comforting to know that, um, there is corrosion control as part of our treatment process. It's effectively like a coating on the pipes in, in our distribution system that's meant to prevent lead from leaching out. And so, um, that's a protection for all our customers.
And that would go in the service line?
Yeah.
Correct. Um, also, as part of what's been happening to date, um, the city as the public water system operator has to submit a lead and copper sampling plan that's reviewed and approved by MASTEP. So those are specific sites around the city that traditionally have been identified as being potentially higher risk than others. So you've already going to more potentially high-risk lead and copper sample sites. That plan gets updated now based on the inventory. So that will be subject in MASTEP approval in the coming months and that will be doubling the number of sample sites for initially so that everyone's recalibrating based on the inventory. And then you do your monitoring, you report back annually in the water quality report, um, which has to be published and publicly provided to all the customers. So that will be part of more of the public education and outreach as more sampling happens and then keep reporting back annually as we go through the project, uh, the regulation.
On, on the sampling, I know, um, back in the, uh, early nineties, um, I had a home that was built in 1867 and the city environmental engineer asked me if I would, um, you know, sample mine. I think it was just a, I don't think it was mandatory at that time, obviously. And so I did, there was none. Um, but, uh, how are we gonna get the samples in the houses?
So similar to what's done, you have to suggest certain sites. You have to get agreement from the property owner to become a sample site and then that customer becomes the sampler, which is exactly how it exists today. There is changes in how EPA is requesting those samples to be collected. So there's additional instructions. Essentially, you capture more total water bottles get collected and then you take very specific ones and those are the ones that get analyzed. So kind of like first flush and running water after several bottles have been collected. So there will be a whole other outreach program for those that are gonna be the likely sites because you have not only the ones you've been doing to date, but plus the added new ones that are coming out of the inventory.
Now, the 3,040, uh, 4,639, um, unknowns, are we gonna, do they do the sample to prove they don't have lead? Or if they don't do that, then we?
So through some combination of either city staff or self-identification, those will go hopefully from unknown to fitting into one of the other three categories, either non-lead, lead or galvanized. So that's the initial push for the next three years is to get, reduce the number of unknowns. Um, and as you track that moving forward, you can have people, you can come up with alternative programs to try and accelerate that process. But the initial push is gonna be through city staff, through routine scheduled visits, uh, called in appointments or self-identification by the customers.
Can we put the timeline up again? Sorry. I was in the wastewater field and more. Oh, we have to, this has to be completed by 2037, but, um, we have to identify the entire inventory by 2027.
Yeah, they give you three years to up, uh, update the inventory is an annual requirement, but the one that is issued in October of 2027 becomes the benchmark you use for your replacement plan, which covers all the way to 2037.
And is this requirement, um, it's federal?
It's started with federal and it's being implemented and overseen by MASTEP.
Now, what if the federal government, they repeal this, this amendment to the Clean Water Act?
Well, roll with that if that is the way.
MASTEP still forces to do it?
Uh, they could choose to adopt their own regulation if they so choose. Um, just as an example, the state of New Jersey implemented something on their own, um, that preceded federal action on this in 2021. So there's, similar to some other drinking water regulations, there's, there's nothing that MASTEP can't make something more conservative or continue a program because they are the delegated authority here in the state.
Right. Um, no.
I see. Dana, great job tonight. Uh, Eric, this question for you. Um, I, I actually spoke to a few people in the water department that do the water meters. There's a really easy way for homeowners to understand what they have if they can get access to their water meter. And it's to looking at the type of feed that comes through the foundation and whether it's a gray pipe or a green or a copper pipe is one way to start. Um, I think that would be a process to help identify if there's a possible change in Dana. If that's something we can get out to the public in the email to ask or maybe ask them to ask their plumbers. That may give us a head start on what they have for the, the service coming to the home. I understand a pipe could break in the middle of the yard. They put copper in because that's new, modern and do it. There's still maybe some sort of lead there. Um, my brother lives in Peabody and they're going through the same thing right now. And what they're, the challenge to do is to go out and get the test kits and they're, they're not that expensive and to do a test and see what it comes up as. So if we can get you guys to get out there with, with an email to the regular city to notify people, some of these things may be helpful, um, for just common knowledge, you know, what, what comes into your foundation. Does it look like an old pipe that you saw on a playground when you were growing up? Does it look copperish or, or, or green? Or is it galvanized like a fence? Um, and that could be starting points to help us. If that could help you guys, that's great. If not, thank you for doing the work.
So just to, the state's, uh, customer identification tool has those little metrics on color, you know, if you can scratch it, if it's magnetic, things like that. And then essentially the customer just puts in their address, the name of their municipality, what they believe it to be in a photo and it gets uploaded and automatically sent to the city. So it has those features you're talking about. And in the letter that goes to the product of 4639 properties that are unknown, there is a QR code and a link to get to that tool that brings you to the DEP website that explains that whole process.
Thank you, Eric. So that's something that's gonna be sent down to the Gloucester?
Yes. Um, these letters were expected to be in the mail today. They had to be mailed by Friday this week. So all, all those with the 12 lead, the 636 galvanized and the 4639 unknowns, all those letters are out the door this week.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
Yeah. And any non, non-lead or non-lead customers will not receive a letter. However, these three other categories will all be receiving letters.
And just also key to note that, that these letters will go out annually until you fall into either a non-lead category or your service line has been replaced. So there's an annual notification. So if a property were to turn over or you have tenants or something like that, that notification keeps coming out annually just so that it's, people are updated.
Phil Groll. Yeah. Thank you very much for your presentation. Um, so let's cut to the chase. You get a letter, find out you've got lead and pipes. What's the deal after that? I mean, you, you obviously, the, the goal is to get them replaced. Are they mandated to get them replaced? They, they bear the full cost of that replacement? And does that include pipes that come into the house also maybe run throughout the house? Talking about potentially major, major projects here. And what are, what are the consequences of not doing it?
So one of, um, I'll break this down in parts. Uh, this is only related to the service line, not interior plumbing. So as soon as you get to the meter, whatever's going on in your specific property, that is of the, um, property owner's responsibility if they were to go do it. Um, uh, lead was effectively banned in 1986 and a lot of the things that are in our interior plumbing, so lead solder. Um, so a lot of anything new plumbing that's been done post 1986 was kind of considered to be exempt from this requirement. You could be condemned non-lead. Um, as far as the costs and responsibility, one of the uniqueness of this regulation is they're requiring replacement of lead service lines, but the public water system doesn't own the service line in its entirety. So it gets into a gray area where you have the potential for work to be done on private properties. Then who funds that? There's nothing that would preempt a property owner from going and hiring a contractor to get their lead or galvanized service line replaced on their own accord. Um, that gets done periodically, I think, because folks have issues with their own service lines if they have leaks and things like that. Um, right now, what, after verification, the city will be responsible submitting a plan to the state that will say, how are we gonna deal with that? Which is gonna have to touch on, how do you fund it? How do you deal with the property ownership issue? Some communities are waiting to see how others do it. Are they gonna be passing additional rules and regulations to say, we're gonna pay for work on private property, maybe just for the service line material? Is there something that it's gonna be contracts go out and there's reimbursement or credits? That, that, the nature of the system of how the, how it's paid for per replacement is not yet known, just because there's some uniqueness on the property ownership. As far as funding goes, the state, through the additional infrastructure funds that have come back to the drinking water trust, they have prioritized lead replacement. So there is special, uh, funding opportunities made available for the next remaining four years dedicated explicitly to lead service line replacement.
Has there been any discussion on making this a betterment issue so that the city can come in and do multiple projects, maybe on a street or, or in an area and then better that to the, to the homeowner, I would assume by helping to reduce costs in that general way?
Haven't discussed that. Um, one more thought is that the letters that are going- Haven't discussed that. Um, one more thought is that the letters that are going out and the webpage we have under the water compliance page on the city website do have some resources, some educational resources about, you know, health effects of lead, EPA recommendations for filters, and sample kits, um, if you have concerns. But at this, at this point, you know, we're all about the verification of the data, and um, if someone has concerns about the health effects of leads, there's some resources for them.
Mr. President, thank you Dana and Eric for your presentation. Very helpful. Uh, I've got a number of questions. Do we know the area of the city where we don't have the information, the unknowns? Is it concentrated in a certain area, or is it spread equally through the city?
Um, we're in the process of getting all this updated to the city's G I S program so we can see and look for any geographic. Um, generally speaking, we did a lot of cross referencing with assessors' records, which has information about original construction, any major rehab. So we also tried to, anything that had been, you know, no longer existed, or showed that it was new construction post nineteen eighty-six, that goes into the non-led category. So we did do that, but ge-
Goes into which category?
Non-led, if you're post nineteen eighty-six. Um, so we haven't done it in great detail. We do have the inventory. It's available through Dana's office, where you can go and look at your address, um, and call up or email, and we can tell you what you are if, if the letter hasn't arrived yet, or it's delayed due to mail service, what have you. That information is available at the address scale. We are going to be moving it over to G I S, at least for internal, and then we have to, there will be a way to see it so you can say, oh, I looked at my property, and like that, that's something that we have to just now bring it to the G I S environment.
Here's why I ask, is I think it would be helpful, especially if a ward counselor knew there's a concentration in their ward, that maybe we could also be helpful as city counselors to help focus on if there's a certain area. And it sounds like older homes would be more likely to be subject to this. So, um, but either way, I just want to get that out there. It's an idea. Second question is, you said you've identified twelve that are already with, with lead in them. Do those twelve know that they have lead in them?
They get their own specific letter. So there's three, uh, Mass D E P developed three templates that we were only allowed to provide contact information adjustments to. The, the language that is there is prescribed by the state. There is a letter that goes to the lead service line properties. There's one goes to the galvanized properties, and then one that goes to the unknown. The language is generally very similar, except they're, they're structured to be that type, because there might, unknown is really more of a, we don't know what you have, you might have something, here's how to go help us verify. The other two are more like, these are the reasons why you're getting your specific letter. Galvanized, because historically, those were downstream of potentially lead services, lead because of just some portion of your service based on the records and information, maybe lead. Those would be ones that also could be follow-up, just for verifying, because it could just be an old record, and if you go in the basement and it's a copper service. Um, it's just, like Dana explained, the customer side of the record wasn't always something that got updated, because the city's responsibility stopped at the curb.
I would like to think that everybody would want to know what their water service has in it. Like, maybe there might be a landlord that doesn't want to know, and doesn't want their tenants to know, that's possible, but I would think everyone would want to know. Is there something we can do? I appreciate the letter going out. Um, we have visits to homes from different agencies. I know we have a whole team of assessors who are here. I'm not asking them to do more than they already do, but maybe there's a note that can be left with people. Uh, I know that in, with Action and with, uh, with POC, there's all sorts of needs. In the police department, there's different needs for people to go into homes. Um, is there a way to sort of cross-pollinate where people are going into homes already, to leave a note that says this is important, and here's how you get it tested, for example? Are we doing that now, and can we do that?
Uh, right now, we had a meeting just last week with Inspectional Services and Housing. So they, in addition to the Water Division, are often in homes for different reasons. They are going to be given the same information, so they can update, just because it's another touch point. Um, uh, that could be expanded to other folks in departments that actually have more interaction, um, as well. It's just very basic information, so it would follow very similar to the customer identification tool.
What questions for me? Counselor Nolan, then we'll get back to you.
Thank you.
So Eric, you brought up one thing that really I think is important, and that was nineteen eighty-six, um, where they started looking into lead as being a, a main culprit and some issues. Um, my house was built in nineteen eighty-six. The lead was not part of the solder. It was something that came in that area, but you were sensitive to it. And if people understand that, you know, eighty-six is still young in a home, it's very important for people to understand to have this checked. And I, I think what you're getting at is, it will be checked, and there's ways of doing it without being expensive or inconvenienced by people entering your home. So you guys are doing a great job, and I want to thank you again.
Yes, there, so there are multiple options on how to verify without having to do. There's no, just, you don't have to take anything apart. It's all just visual. Um, one other thing, um, that you touched on was, um, so these letters are going to both the physical property owner and the property, so that for those that are rental properties, or the owners are, are at a different address, there is an attempt to get to both the physical address and the owner's address if they differ. Um, so there is some expectation that, like you said, there is going to be instances where a letter should have been in the public hallway of, or, or in the hallway of a multi-unit. That is, that onus is on the property owner, but there are letters going to physical address in addition to owner's address to try and address that, because the Water Department may not know the number of units, because there's a single service, not necessarily knowing that there's six units in the building. So again, that speaks to the departmental support, because some other departments may know that.
Counselor Gro.
Uh, very quickly, will there be a public database available, and will there be uh, an opportunity to translate this into multiple languages so that people who live in the community that don't speak English as a major, as their primary language, Italian, Spanish, Portuguese, uh, whatever, have access to this information as well? And also, these letters are coming out next week. I imagine that everyone in this council is going to be getting calls from this. Where do we direct them to calm nerves? Uh, we don't want any, any hair on fire. This is obviously an urgent situation, but it's not, like-
Yeah. Um, so the database is currently available through Dana's office at the Water, Water Compliance. So you can, uh, the contact information is up on the screen, both phone and the, and the email address that goes to the main office. Plans to make it visible through either G I S, through the public G I S data, like we were talking about, and also providing a more search-friendly version. I mean, it's a lot of, it's a big spreadsheet, basically. Um, finding a way that it might be accessible through the city's website is an, is another next step, just so that folks can go and search by street. Um, as far as language, um, that would just come down to just getting it to the right resources, because it, the letters themselves are two to three pages long, so there's a decent amount of text, um, and just in terms of like wanting to make sure that it's relatable. The state did not provide any templates in alternate languages, unfortunately.
Counselor Worthley.
Thank you. Just a couple more. I appreciated Counselor Gro's question about multiple languages on my list. Um, we have people who could translate if necessary, so I think we should probably consider that in some regard, because there are people who won't know, even if they get a letter in English, they won't know. Um, I know with, and I am, I am not the real estate expert in the room here. I know we see a couple of people at the assessor's office, and Ruth Pino's here, but when there's lead paint, there's notifications, there's, you can't sell your house with lead paint. Is there some tests? Because as properties are sold, that may be another mechanism to trigger the testing of-
Counselor, this is about water, not paint. So let's stay on topic, please, because that's, that's not their, that's not their-
I wasn't asking them about lead paint. I'm asking if there's a process where, through the real estate transactions, we can ask people to do lead testing in their water, too? A disclosure, right. So if there's forty-six hundred or forty-three hundred houses, some of them will be sold this year, and maybe there's a mechanism to say, and can you get this test done either as a requirement, or just simply as a notification? Because no one wants to buy a house that has lead coming into their water.
I can't speak to where the legality of disclosure requirements, but there are communities considering putting in an, a bylaw ordinance that's similar to Title V at a property transaction, if you have a known lead or galvanized, that, that it has to be replaced as part of that transaction.
We do have an expert in the house that could add, uh, answer us if it's in the disclosure agreement. No? Thank you.
Right. I think, I think most likely it's coming down to, this is brand-new requirements, so most people wouldn't, I mean, um, but there are communities trying to figure out, like, what do you do for those who don't opt into having it replaced? How do you guarantee that it comes out? Because the requirement is that it comes out by two thousand thirty-seven. If someone doesn't want to let the municipality or the water system take care of it, because they're, they're just saying no to any work on their property, like, at some point, that has to come out, um, by regulation. So some communities are considering some, a backstop ordinance that says, uh, at a transaction, you could, you could consider replacement at that time, in order to get final sign-off on the water bill, or sewer bill, or what have you.
Thank you. When a community does figure that out, could you let us know so we could, I guess, copy and paste, and just change the name to Gloucester? I think that'd be helpful. Um, could there be wells that have lead pipes somehow in their home? People on wells?
Uh, that would come down to just interior plumbing, same, same issue that all the properties are subject to, just based on age and materials. Mainly, it comes from the solder and some of the other things that were in just general plumbing fittings, but, so yes.
It's the same, though, as, as people in public water supply. Are we able to test, though? Is that part of the public water-
A homeowner on a well could purchase a lead test kit for their home, but they're not considered a customer of the public water supplier that is the city of Gloucester.
So they could be either an unknown or a lead-
Uh, they would actually not be in the system at all.
Yeah, they're not considered in our inventory, because they're not a water customer.
Yeah.
This is addressing water customers.
Just think we have an obligation, everybody in some regard, so I don't expect that to be your obligation.
Yeah, I think that that's their obligation, you know, to, to know that what they have.
Our obligation, though, to figure out, to let them know.
It's their private property, so, um, they're, they're not, um, they're not going to be, they're not subject to this.
Right. I don't expect you to do, do that, but I just wonder if we as a council should be considering ways to-
I don't think we can really dictate things on private property, but I don't want to keep going on this.
Public health.
I understand.
Anyway, I'm done. Thank you.
Uh, Counselor Majoyta. Quick question. Um, on the Gloucester Public Works, um, the, and I hate saying this, like, the Facebook, the social media aspect, are you, not you, but your office will be saying something that these letters will be going out, or is there a link that you guys can do to sort of help us? So I think a lot of the ward counselors or councils at large, um, are able to get more out to the community by sharing, um, the situation to, you know, our followers, our constituents, so that way we'd be able, better able to communicate to them what's going on. Because I haven't seen anything on the, uh, social media website yet, but I was open-
Nothing has gone out via social media, and I think that's a good, good idea. Um, we'll probably do that after the letters are, are being received. But, uh, the link right here, um, is to the Water Compliance webpage on the city website. We've got resources there. Um, I haven't done it yet, but I'm going to upload copies of the letters, so that if folks are receiving them and they're wondering, like, what is this? Is this a legitimate notification? Here's a copy of what we sent out. You can ver, verify that, yes, this was sent from us. Um, and that's got a frequently asked questions document, it's got links to education through EPA. Um, so that's where we'd like to direct folks is.
Okay. If possible, um, my only suggestion is, if we can get that possibly before the letters, or the, if you could time it, so people would be like, okay, if I get this letter, this is what I can do, sort of like, so they're, we're not like reacting, they could be, okay, I already got this information from my counselor. I got the letter, this is what I'm going to do, so they're not surprised in sort of what to do, or some, or calling us. We're sort of like, trying to be like two steps ahead of them, like, hey, you can get this letter, this is what the steps are, based on what you guys have already said, we're just going to try to share it with them, if possible.
Yeah, the letter does have the link to our website with all the resources. Um, I can work on the social media-
That's like a small snippet, so we can just send it. I know that you're busy.
Snippet.
I will say, we also included a supplemental letter that the state allowed us to put in, which tries to boil it down into more of, kind of like, initial questions and concerns, which I would say the D E P letters don't really speak to, because they're more from the causing concern through what some of the language they're using. We did put one in that kind of walks through some things, uh, very basic. So those are included in each of the, as a supplemental letter to each of those getting notified.
Dana, have we seen the entire presentation? Because there may be-
Yeah, this is it.
Okay. Counselor Gilman.
Just a quick thought on communication. If you reach out to Ethan Forman, it might be nice to get something on this topic in the newspaper, because we still have a fairly good base of folks.
He has been engaged.
Great, great. Thank you so much to both of you.
Counselor Benson.
Thank you. Uh, thank you for the presentation. Thank you for all your work. Uh, my question is, like, how many letters? Do we have an estimate of how many letters are going out to households? Like, the number?
Uh, roughly speaking, it's-
Four thousand six hundred and forty-nine.
Just shy of fifty-three hundred.
Nine, then sixty, six hundred and thirty-two, and then twelve.
Okay.
That's just to soak people on, just like how many are coming, going out.
Yeah, there was a total of almost thirteen and a half thousand property records that were reviewed, and we ended up with that roughly, the fifty-two hundred, plus or minus, are the ones that will be getting notified.
And some of these properties, there are two letters because of-
Because of the, the property owner doesn't, just to clarify, yeah, the property owner doesn't-
The actual letters, I don't know the number, but it, it's more than that.
That's what, that's why I was trying to ask, and I knew that, and just another, if I may, just another question is, when we were talking about funding, looking at, from the state and the federal government, the state received fifty million dollars from the federal government with the Infrastructure Act for removal of lead, lead service lines, and the lead service line replacement program. Is there some of that that we as a municipality could get to help, um, residents remove the lead?
So, um, the city's inventory program to date has actually been funded through a grant, through some of those monies. Um, there is additional monies being made available to help with the verification. Um, what the state has provided is, uh, special funding through the State Revolving Fund for the replacement program, which is really more putting it on the onus where that, that applicant would be the city, and then they do not, will not issue funding if you're only doing partial replacements. So if the city can't go and ask for state funding just to replace the city-owned portion, it's, you got to replace the whole service if you want funds. So that is one of the strings that is attached. The first projects that are getting funded through those additional infrastructure dollars for lead service line replacement started in last year's program, and will be continuing with the, this summer, this past summer's applications, I'm sure saw a, an increase in the number of communities seeking to get replacement funds.
Okay. Just from my understanding, you would have to have the whole thing replaced to get the funding. It wouldn't be just city, the city side here.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah. The state will not give you funds for partial replacements.
Thank you. And, um, there was another question, but the council president asked it at the beginning. Thank you.
There's five thousand two hundred and eighty-seven letters.
They've been mailed. They should be-
They were going in the mail today, because the post office was closed yesterday.
Did the, um, uh, do you have in that letter how people can try to access any of these, because you said the drinking water, um, I wrote down plus, but that's-
Trust.
Drinking water plus?
Trust.
Trust.
Are you talking about funding?
For funding?
Yeah.
Uh, funding, uh, no, right now it is more on, uh, public health-related items for the lead and galvanized due to the potential exposure. Um, uh, the unknown is, gives additional information just on how to verify the material of your service line, uh, but it's not related to funding. It's just related to, this is the information that the water system has currently for your property.
Yeah, because, um, I read an article today that, uh, it's nationally, it's going to be, you know, close to forty billion dollars for homeowners, not for municipalities in the nation. So it's going to be putting a considerable burden on people who really can't shoulder the burden anymore. And we need to figure out some way to try to get access, since the, the state's making us do it. Did you send a cover letter explaining that the city of Gloucester was not responsible for this?
So there is a supplemental letter that touches on just like, some of that FAQ-style information, and leads them to the same information. Um, it does- It does get into some of the nuance that there is a privately owned side of a service and a publicly owned side, which I'm sure a lot of folks don't understand that there is a demarcation as to who does what, similar to, you run into the same thing with sewer laterals oftentimes.
We know a lot about water lines in Gloucester.
Yeah. So it is, it is, it is mentioned as part of that. Um, I think we can put up Dana's graphic on the website too, just so that it's clear where that line of ownership is.
Really, my question was, was it included in there that this was not initiated by us? This was a federal.
Yes, that is, yes.
And, and all public water suppliers are doing this right now. So it's going to be confusing and overwhelming, um, but we're not the only ones doing this and everyone's kind of navigating these next steps together.
It's. Councilor Gro, do you have a question?
Uh, I'm good.
All right. Any more questions?
Yep. Do we know predominantly what part of town these letters are going?
Jeff, Jeff adds that.
Okay.
They don't, they don't yet.
They don't yet, okay.
We'll look at the geographic distribution shortly.
I think anecdotally, it's throughout.
And can you send us this PowerPoint? And the letter?
Well.
All three letters.
All three letters and the supplemental letter, yeah.
Yeah. That would be great. All right, if there's nothing, nothing more? Thank you very much for this, because we're going to definitely be getting lots of questions on it. Next order of business, Madam Clerk.
Confirmation of new appointments.
Councilor Nolan.
So we have on the Gloucester Cultural Council, Sally Jackson, fulfilling an unexpired term, term to end two fifteen twenty-five. Sally has come before the Ordinance Administration Committee with a vote totally in favor. She can't make it tonight. I feel as though Sally's well-known throughout the council, being a alternate member. And I'm fairly confident, um, to put her up for a recommendation tonight without any objection. She has been sworn in, I believe, and everything else is in, in good shape. So with that being said, when a motion by Councilor Majota, seconded by Councilor Grace, the Ordinance Administration Committee voted three in favor, zero opposed, to recommend the city council appoint Sally Jackson, fulfilling an unexpired term to the city council, to the Gloucester Culture Council, term to end two fifteen, two thousand twenty-five, and now so move.
Second. Motion made by Councilor Nolan, seconded by Councilor Majota. Did you read, um, so that's the, any discussion on the motion? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? None, the ayes have it, eight to zero, one absent. And next order of business, Madam Clerk.
Consent agenda.
Would anyone like to remove anything from the consent agenda?
Yes.
Okay. Councilor Gro.
Uh, number one under communications invitations, please.
Okay. Anything else we want to remove? All right, let's, um, we'll have a vote on the consent agenda, or I move that we, um, adopt, adopt the consent agenda. Move by Councilor Gilman. Seconded by Councilor Worthley. All those in favor, um, as, without the, uh, without the number one. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, eight to zero, one absent. Councilor Gro.
Yeah, uh, this, uh, Human Rights Commission resolution, um, would normally come back to us at the next, uh, city council meeting as the second appearance on the, on the calendar. At, at the request of the HRC and also, um, to coincide with Human Rights Day, uh, I'm asking that it be continued to the first meeting in December, which would be December tenth, um, which is basically just the meeting after this.
Second. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Yeah, uh, seeing none, the ayes have it, eight to zero, uh, one absent. Next order of business, Madam Clerk.
The November seventh Budget and Finance Standing Committee report.
Okay. We had a whole bunch of, um, of contractual obligations that we just, um, are fulfilling our financial obligation to that. It's a lower number than it was because there's several positions that we still haven't been able to fill. The job market out there is really, really hard. So I'd like to take these as a consent agenda. Oh yeah, number one, sorry. Vote, oh yours too? We can, we can do them all as one consent agenda. So there's the, um, Councilor Worthley, you want to make the motions?
Sure, each of the motions? Or is it consent agenda?
Um, oh yeah, consent, consent agenda, sorry. I don't know what, something wrong with me, this cold is killing me. Any discussion on the consent agenda for these items? Yep.
I'd like if you could just read the little blurb for one and two, just so the public is aware of what we're approving. We don't have to go through the motion, we can.
Right. Yep. We have a memorandum from the city clerk requesting transfer of funds in order to pay for workers to staff the early voting period on Saturday, October ninth, Thursday, October twenty-fourth, from four to six P M. Saturday, October twenty-sixth, and Thursday, October thirty-first, from four to six P M, in the amount of eight hundred dollars. And this money is coming from the, um, savings that we had by a position that was not available, that has not been fulfilled, filled. And the other one is a memorandum from the Chief Financial Officer to, um, fund the GMA contract obligation and department head wage scale changes in the amount of fifty-five thousand dollars. Discussion? Councilor Worthley.
Yes, um, on the discussion, and this one, I'm going to, is partly a question, um, Grace, the eight hundred dollars is not the total cost for the early voting, that's the additional cost, correct?
Correct. It's just for those days. I had originally planned on having staff, staff the early voting for that, but it just got so crazy busy in our office that it wasn't going to work. So I needed to hire some more, um, early voting workers to staff the two Saturdays and the Thursday afternoons.
And if I could comment on the, the first part of that motion of the, um, the transfer for the funds for the GMA, GMMA contract? Is it GMAA or GMA? Gloucester Municipal Managers Association. So we had put, the mayor had requested the Budget and Finance Committee to put a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars into contingency fund in the mayor's line item budget, under the mayor's item, I'm sorry. And, um, it was to negotiate in good faith and have the money set aside in advance of negotiations. That contract expired on September first and was renewed or settled on September fourth. And we are not spending as much because, partly because we haven't filled some of the positions. And so of the hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars set aside, we're asking to transfer fifty-five thousand dollars into individual line items in the budget to bring those contracts in compliance with the new settled contract. That makes sense. I, I can answer more questions on that if anybody has them. So I'd be supporting that.
I, I think that we, this is the third transfer regarding, that we've approved regarding election costs. I believe, has there been three? Yeah, yeah, it was. We, we did, we had to do three that, the cost just kept going up. Unfortunately, we have this buffer because they've been having to work extra hard without having that, um, person on staff or office that's staff minimally anyway. All right. That's it. We need a motion to accept.
So moved.
Second. Motion made by Councilor Gilman, seconded by Councilor Worthley. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes eight to zero, um, with one absence. Next order of business.
November fourth, ordinances and administration standing committee report.
There's no action tonight. We have info in our report. We do have coming up, uh, Gloucester Dakota Ordinance, Chapter Two Administration, Article Three, um, which is from Worthley looking into the amount of buildings that may be built or may not be built if there is an overlay district. And that will be continued until December second, two thousand twenty-four.
Councilor Nolan, there's another item.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see that. Then there's another one, um, C C two thousand twenty-four, zero sixteen, MemHog, um, to amend GCO, Chapter Twenty-two, Section Two, two dash two seventy-one, resident sticker parking only by Addenham and Street. This, uh, has been withdrawn without prejudice.
Did you vote on that level to withdraw without prejudice?
Next order of business.
November sixth, Planning and Development Standing Committee report.
Uh, thank you very much. Um, basically, we reviewed, uh, the Main Street application, City Council, Plumber, two thousand twenty-four dash zero zero three, Main Street, number twenty. Um, we are going to be having, as noted, a committee of the whole on November twentieth, so the next P and D meeting. I believe we're going to have it here in the, in the auditorium. I really would invite, uh, city councillors to review that, um, uh, meeting. A lot of questions were asked and answered. A lot of concerns were raised and addressed by the applicant, um, and also by the third-party reviewers. We, we're not going to have Greg Katemore come back and redo a presentation on the third-party review. That's all there in the, in the recording. So I'm, I'm just encouraging you to take the time to go through what we've already done so that we're not repeating, uh, steps unnecessarily. And, you know, most importantly, bring questions you have for the, uh, the application and the applicant. And if you have constituents' concerns, uh, we will not be taking, uh, public input at that meeting. That's going to save for that public hearing. But certainly they are welcome to ask you questions to ask at the, at the subcommittee meeting so that we can get to the, uh, the full depth of what we need to know before we make a decision. So that's it for that. That's next, uh, November twentieth, next Wednesday.
The President asked a question of the P and D Chair.
Yep.
Would it be appropriate for councillors who have questions, argue for the applicant, to submit them somehow in advance or they don't have to?
Yeah.
Have to be bombarded with this.
In fact, if you have questions from constituents, you can forward, you can either forward them to me and I will forward them to the applicant or you can, I mean, that makes the most sense, but, um, and please, if you could do it in enough time for them to answer. So if we can get them by the end of the week, um, that would give them the weekend and a couple of days to get through, uh, any, any questions they might.
It might not mean that you need to email the answers, but they can be prepared to answer them at the meeting.
Right. What, what they did before was that they, they, uh, we had a full two pages of questions that were submitted to the applicant who then submitted a copy of her answers back again, which we read through and, and explained. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. All right. All those in favor? Oh, there's no motion yet? Oh, that's right.
I'm in favor.
Sorry, I'm telling you. I don't know what happened today.
Okay. Take the last hour. Tax classification. Done.
There's no more. Uh, next order of business, Madam Clerk.
Public hearing twenty twenty-four, number sixteen, S C P twenty twenty-four, number three, the application of twenty Main LLC for the demolition and conversion of an office building to multifamily housing containing twenty-four units and retail space at Main Street, number twenty, map seven, lot ninety-four in the C B district.
So this matter is continued to finally, and a date that it will be before us, um, is November twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-four. So it's an open public hearing as, um, right now.
Next is public hearing twenty twenty-four, number thirty-five, tax classification in accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter Forty, Section Five, and GCO, Chapter Two, Section Two dash twenty-six, to determine the percentage of the local tax levy for the fiscal year twenty twenty-five to be borne by each class of real and personal property.
And I will open the public hearing. Those who would like to, um, speak in favor? Or give a presentation, I think is more what it will be. The handheld, yes, those don't, those don't work. They're not hooked up.
Can you hear me? Yes. Okay, good. Nancy Papas, Principal Assessor. Also present are Gary Johnstone and Tim Good, Assessor. Um, we're here basically to give information prior to the public hearing. The fiscal twenty-five assessed values and new growth were approved by the Department of Revenue on October eighteenth, twenty twenty-four. This.
Nancy, just one second. All the information that this is on the B N F packet from November seventh. So if you could go to the B N F packet on November seventh, you will have her present, the presentation that was given to us at B N F and it will be really helpful to follow along. Thank you.
Thank you. This allows us to move forward with the tax classification process. There are four options to consider, none of which change the total tax levy. As there are no parcels classified as open space and the mayor has not chosen to adopt either the residential exemption or the small commercial exemption, the focus is on determining whether or not to shift a portion of the tax levy from one class of property to another. To do so, a residential factor must be adopted. This factor determines the share of the tax levy that each class of property will bear. Page four shows the total value and percentage of each class. The residential class makes up ninety-one point five eight percent of the total value and the C I P class, eight point four two percent. The taxable value of the city increased just over four percent from fiscal twenty-four. Based on the sales analysis, the residential class as a whole saw market adjustments of approximately three percent. And property types within the residential class ranged from approximately two point five percent to five point seven five percent.
Sorry to interrupt, Nancy, but can you or any of your staff forward this presentation to the city clerk so we can put it up?
The presentation, I'm on the class packet that was already given.
No, I understand that, but this for the viewers at home, so they can see what we're talking about. It's, yeah. It is. I was just. Okay. Sorry.
That's okay.
Trying to be as transparent as possible.
So property types within the residential class saw market adjustments in the range of two, two and a half percent roughly to five point seven five. Market adjustments to the single-family class were approximately two point seven five percent. Two and three-family class, three point two five percent. The apartment class, two point five percent. And condominium class, five point seven five percent. The commercial class as a whole saw market adjustments of approximately two and a half percent. And market adjustments to the residential class, I mean, I'm sorry, to the industrial class as a whole were approximately three percent. So overall, slightly higher market adjustments on the residential side, but much closer and more similar than in past years on a class basis. Page five shows the parcel counts and assessed values of each class from two thousand and twelve to the present. And if you look at the bottom of the page on the packet, from fiscal twenty-four to fiscal twenty-five, you're going to see a slight decrease in the residential class percentage and a slight increase in the C I P class percentage. This is due in part to the market adjustments. is due in part to the market adjustments being more similar with the classes, and also due to growth, considerable growth in the personal property class for fiscal twenty-five. Page six shows the historic shift factors adopted over the years, and it's the underlying residential factor associated with the shift that is voted on. Page seven is the calculation of the maximum allowable levy. It starts with the fiscal twenty-four levy limit. This is reduced by amended fiscal twenty-four new growth. Added to that is the prop two and a half increase, residential new growth, and commercial, industrial, and personal property new growth. This results in the fiscal twenty-five levy limit. Added to that are the debt exclusions, the CSO debt, the water debt, and East Veterans elementary. With that addition, the result is the maximum allowable levy for fiscal twenty-five, and that number divided by the total value of all parcels results in a tax rate at a factor of one of nine point seven five, which is rounded downward not to exceed the maximum allowable levy. The tax rate at a factor of one is only a penny down from fiscal twenty-four. The reason for this is the increases or market adjustments that were made are basically offset by the prop two and a half increase. A factor of one results in the same tax rate for all classes of property, and any factor other than one shifts a portion of the levy to another class. Page eight shows the approximate tax rates that result from the various shifts to the CIP class, and the maximum shift allowed by the state is one point five. Page nine shows a comparison of levies by class at various shift factors. The tax rates are approximate and rounded so as not to exceed the maximum allowable levy. And the far right-hand corner shows the difference in tax levy each class will bring in after the shift. Page ten shows changes in tax dollars for properties valued at different levels at various shifts. It shows the savings to the residential taxpayers and the increase in tax dollars for CIP taxpayers. For fiscal twenty-five, the average single-family home is valued at nine hundred forty-eight thousand, nine hundred and ninety-seven dollars. The median single family is valued at six hundred sixty-eight thousand, eight hundred dollars, and the average residential value is seven hundred seventy-eight, nine forty-five. So in looking in the property value column of seven hundred and fifty thousand, if you were looking at a one point oh three shift, it would result in an annual savings to the residential taxpayer of fifteen dollars, while the CIP taxpayer would pay an additional two hundred seventeen dollars and fifty cents. The maximum shift of one point five is illustrated at the bottom of the page, and in that same column, there would be a savings to the residential taxpayer of three hundred thirty-seven dollars and fifty cents, while the CIP taxpayer would pay an additional three thousand six hundred and sixty dollars. The remainder of the packet explains the open space discount and the residential and small commercial exemptions, which are not viable options this year. As I indicated, both Gary and Tim are here. We'll do our best to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Questions?
Counselor Gilman.
So.
Oh, no, we're going to make a motion first. Sorry.
True.
Oh, public hearing. Oh, yeah. What the hell am I talking about? Sorry. Anyone else would like to speak in, in favor? Anyone would like to speak in opposition? Oh, did you want to speak in favor? The recommendation is to adopt residential tax factor of ninety-nine, seven point nine nine seven two zero zero. That equates to a CPI shift of one point three, one point oh three. So it's, it's the same as it is today, one point oh three. So that's what we'll be, that's what we'll be voting on and are dependent upon amendments. So, yep. Go ahead, Steve. So. Well, you start. Counselor Nolan had an emergency he had to attend to.
Hello. My name is Stephen Buckley. I live at Six Puerto Drive in Gloucester, Mass, and I am the CEO of the Greater Cape Anne Chamber of Commerce. So I do feel that I offer a unique perspective, actually, three perspectives, one as a homeowner and a taxpayer, one as the CEO of the Greater Cape Anne Chamber, but also I run a small business. So I look at it three different ways. Obviously, listening to our members, listening to the presentation, and doing my research, both what Gloucester historically, I know a lot of it is presented here, but also what our surrounding communities are doing. And I know our surrounding communities, our members of the chamber, our communities are, they have tax parity. So Gloucester is unique in that we are the only community in Greater Cape Anne that we represent that has the different tax, tax classification for businesses already. And I think that is important to note. As you all know, the vast majority of Gloucester businesses are small businesses, actually, about ninety-five percent of Gloucester businesses are small businesses. And I think it's pretty obvious that most small businesses are struggling. And I know, running a small business, that every single expense matters. And, you know, as Nancy pointed out, with the differentials, what might be a couple of lattes for a homeowner like myself, two hundred, every time it goes up a little bit, that two hundred and fifty dollars is a lot. And we know from the chamber, because when people saying, I can't afford my membership, I had to cut this expense out, that two hundred dollars, the five hundred dollars, the a thousand dollars is significant for people that are trying to keep the lights on. So I think that really has to be put into perspective, that, that is the business community that we represent. And it's, as you could see with the numbers, it's a small amount of the overall tax base. And actually, sadly, the amount seems to be shrinking, and I think we need to keep an eye on that. And obviously, my job is to advocate for businesses because I'm listening to businesses every day and running a small business. So I think we have to think about also what our businesses are contributing in other ways. Obviously, the vibrancy of our community, but also significant amount of revenue. When we look at our summer season review and the figures that come in, our businesses in local options taxes are contributing approximately three million dollars to the city. So we need those businesses to be here, and we need them to contribute in the ways that they contribute. So I urge the council to consider that. Consider the small businesses who also, most of them live here, and they understand they are paying taxes like myself. So I urge you to consider that and take that into consideration when you're looking at that tonight and voting on it. It's important, it's important to the small businesses and to keep them here because with inflation and the costs and everything that's going on out there, every dollar really does matter to these small businesses. Thank you very much for your time, councilors.
Thank you. We have to limit the next speakers to three minutes. No, no, you had, you had the, the big, you did the big opposition timeframe.
I'll keep this short. My name is Tony Sapienza. I am owner of the Blue Shutter's beachside inn, an accommodation on One Nautilus Road. I'm also a past president of the chamber in two thousand twenty, current member of the chamber's board of directors, and I'm chair of the chamber's tourism council. I'm here to speak in support of business tax classification parity, echo much, much of what Steve had to say. I feel that the shift that's being discussed is truly unfair to the business community and ill-advised for the city as a whole for a lot of the points that Steve made. You know, as a homeowner, I can understand the desire to manage the tax burden for the little guy. But as one of the councilors pointed out in last week's meeting, the Gloucesters, Gloucester businesses that are being asked to shoulder more of the tax burden are little guys as well, local business owners who employ locals. And given that there are many more homeowners that would be affected versus the relatively small number of businesses, the impact, I think, unfairly burdens the business community. I'm one of those businesses. I was also the chamber president during, during COVID and saw the, the struggles that that caused the business community. We're still reeling from it, and any additional burden is, is really, really unnecessary, I think. I've come dead, also, I come to understand the financial challenges a business face, you know, of all the accommodations, the restaurants and attractions that are part of the tourism community that give back to this community. You know, I think the shift that we're considering make more sense for communities that have a larger commercial base. It just doesn't seem to make sense for the Gloucester business community. And for this reason, I urge you to consider the tax, the tax classification parity. You know, just remind us, a difficult time for businesses, added unnecessary pressures, you know, to those of us who are struggling today. So thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, everyone. Thanks to all of you who came yesterday to the Vietnam Memorial Service. I'm Ruth Pino. I live at eighty-two Wheeler Street, and I was a past president of the chamber. But on page five, that's what I always like for you to really pay attention to and see the differential between residential and commercial. So try not to think about personal property. Just look at the commercial, industrial, and see over time how short it's become. And we have to protect our small businesses. Where our kids go to work, it's who donates gift cards to everything that happens. They support our community. We need to support them. Thank you.
Thank you, Ruth. Don't see anyone online. And did we get any communications, Madam Clerk?
We did not.
Okay. Questions from the councilors to the applicants and staff. Jason Groh.
Nancy, can I have a quick question? I'm going to bloviate later on in a bit, but I do have a couple of quick questions. Can you speak a little bit to the, the significant changes in the personal property assessments for not only this year, but also, I think, as far back as two thousand twenty-two? I'm trying to look at my numbers here. There seem to be two jumps, especially this year.
Yes. Going back between twenty and twenty-one, I believe, in terms of fiscal years, the state required us to change the methodology, methodology in terms of the five oh four utilities, which are like Boston Gas, Mass Electric. In doing that, there was a spike in the increase in value on those two accounts. This past year, there was actually growth based on a project completed by Mass Electric, and that was considerable. So there's a value increase just on Boston Gas and Mass Electric of thirty-two million almost, which is why that figure from twenty-four to the twenty-five figure is so significantly higher.
Those are fairly, they're sort of outliers in the, in the normal scheme of things.
Yes.
Well, the other question I wanted to get to, and I, I brought this up last year, and I'm going to talk about it a little bit more too, is that the issue of, of residential assessments are going up at a far significantly faster rate than commercial, industrial, and generally speaking, the personal property, which except for those two outlying years. Is the effect on that, that despite the shift, the, the commercial and the industrial percentages of the levy have gone down relative to that? I'm, I'm looking at my sort of numbers, which I'm happy to have corrected, that between two thousand and nineteen and two thousand twenty-five, residential levy went up to like three point eight, eight percent, excuse me, three point eight seven percent per year, three point six eight, as much as five point two seven, or three point eight two, whereas during those same years, commercial was at point two nine, point seven four, one point two as part of the total levy. In fact, in, a couple of years ago, commercial and went down one point five nine percent and down three point three five percent. And similar in the industrial, in fact, more, more pronounced industrials. Does that effectively nullify the, what we're doing in terms of the tax shift and put more obligation on the residential taxpayers?
Over time, if you look back, we've, in the real estate market, and that's what we're basically measuring, what's happening with sales, we've been seeing increasing values on the residential side since roughly fiscal fourteen. They've been more significant in various years, and especially the past few, not counting this one. That impacts the value of that class at a greater rate than commercial, industrial, which that market is a little bit more stable. It's a financial decision based on investor expectations. So the commercial, industrial is typically more stable. So the residential, if, if that class is a larger class to begin with and increasing at a faster pace, is going to be bringing in a larger piece of the pie, just based on that. Nothing to do with shift, per se.
Right, right. I guess because the shift is so inconsequential that it, it's all, for all intents and purposes, it's a one point oh. But I, I'm looking at the commercial and the, and the industrial especially. There are, if, if you look at time over year, two thousand eighteen to today, they're paying point zero nine percent more in the total levy as a class for commercial, and you're actually seeing a minus three percent in the amount the industrial properties are paying as a class, whereas on the residential side, we're looking at twenty-seven point seven four percent of, of that increase. I'm, I guess, I'm just, I'm trying to, you know, we talk about the shift as being really rough on commercial and industrial properties, but in fact, we're having a different kind of shift back in terms of the fact that the residential's are picking up what the commercial and industrial classes are not paying.
Residential, basically because of the higher percentage and the higher increases in value, their percentage of the pie has been increasing. This is the first kind of, you know, we, we talked about the two little blips in terms of the personal property. So what I think you're talking about is more the natural, natural shift that occurs when you look at just what we have as a makeup of a city. The residential value, that includes any market adjustments as well as any growth. You know, and there's more, there's more growth in the residential class than there is in the commercial, industrial as well.
Right. But I guess when people talk about their taxes going up, they're going up at a, at a faster clip than commercial and industrial.
If you're in a year, it's, it's kind of hard to talk about specific properties. But if you're looking at, if you're looking at year to year, and one class is having more significant market adjustments, which has been happening with the residential class over time, then they are most likely, those increases are higher than the, the average in some cases. So if we're saying the residential class is seeing like a ten percent increase in one year, and commercial, industrial is only seeing two, they are going to be paying more in taxes as a class and, and individually, most likely, if their, if their property is responding similar to what the class is doing.
Counselor Gilman.
So I'm not sure if Jill Cahill is still on the phone, but I would be interested in the mayor's recommendation of one point oh three and why that was the recommendation.
Sure. Thank you. Thank you, counselor.
Thank you, counselor. Right now, the most important thing to the mayor is stability and predictability. We've been at the 1.03 in order to give both businesses and residents some predictability on what to expect again, because as Nancy was saying, some of the, some of the changes happen through the market that we can't control. This is the one area that we have some, can offer our residents and our business owners and our property owners some predictability.
Thank you.
Counselor Gro.
Sorry to belabor you with this stuff. Again, throwing my, the numbers into the spreadsheets, the calculations basically look as if over time, for say, the last 20 years, 21 years, the relatively, the relative ratio between residential and CIP has been 90-10. That's, would you, would you sort of agree with that?
Yes.
Is there a mechanism by which we can, we can maintain that ratio so that as prices in the residential class continue to rise and commercial industrial, I mean, we've seen a little, little blip up this year, but it's not typical, continue to be stable, shift some of that responsibility back to the commercial industrial properties?
What we're talking about with classification, that is possible. There are communities that that is their rationale for potentially wanting to shift in terms of keeping a stable amount of the total percentage that each class is bringing in. The issue with our, on page eight, if you were to look at that and you wanted to maintain the 90 for the residential, we're talking about a pretty significant shift of almost 1.2. And the danger in a community like ours is that a significant shift like that onto a very small portion of the populace, which would be the CIP class. If you go to page 10 and look at the 1.2, you're going to see that the savings to the resident is still only $135 a year for that $750,000 property, while the CIP taxpayer will pay $1,470 on an annual basis. So you have to keep in mind the impact that you would have on the commercial class where it's so much smaller in terms of the piece of the pie. But there's a way to achieve it within the shift, if that's the policy that somebody, you know, proposes or, you know, different communities, like I say, there's lots of different reasons why they shift or don't. And that is one of the ones that I know that some communities have tried to adhere to.
I guess, again, I'm looking at these numbers, and I'm looking back at 2018, and I'm looking at the valuation of the commercial class. The total valuation was $351,927,000. It's gone up to 4, sorry, $468,785,000. But the total levy that is levied on the commercial properties has gone up $9,541, if you subtract 2018 from 2025. They're paying exactly the same amount of taxes as they were six years ago, seven years ago.
Are we in question period?
I'm asking a question.
I'm waiting.
As someone who's, yeah.
I was asking you.
Is it, would it, right, I know there's a lot of, but is there a way to do this incrementally over time so that we manage to create a more stable platform for residences to know that they're going to carry 90% of the tax base and CIP is going to carry 10% of the tax base?
Tax classification in general is at the, it is for the city council to decide with the approval of the mayor. So each year, we're basically, you know, at a factor of one, anything is available in terms of what you want to recommend or vote on, for that matter. So we're never probably going to see anything higher than the ability to shift over 1.5, which would be a massive change. But every increment in between is available every year at this time.
Thank you.
Following that, I mean, what I'm seeing is in the valuation on page four, that it is strictly, percentage of the burden is strictly by valuation. And residential, unfortunately for us, 91.8% of our tax revenue comes from residential.
That's basically because in Massachusetts, as you know, ad valorem tax. If it was a factor of one with all properties having the same tax rate, it's just based on value. And our residential class this year is that 91.58, and that hasn't changed dramatically, as Counselor Gro mentioned, over time. We've, we've been consistently in the 90-10 range.
And now it's down to 8.42, which is lower than what you were saying. The valuation is, or even in, you know, at one, they're still going to be, or at, you know, the residential valuation is higher. And that's, you know, that's just the value is what it is.
Which means they're paying a higher percentage of the overall taxes.
No, they own a higher percentage of the value.
Which means they're paying more.
Because they own.
I appreciate that. I understand that.
Counselor Worthley.
Thank you. I'm not sure. First of all, thank you for your presentation, Nancy. You always do a fine job, great job. I'm going to ask some rhetorical questions that maybe you have the answers to, and if you don't, then you don't obviously have to answer them. Do any students in Gloucester School have a business address as a home address?
Any students in the school, I would not know.
Is it likely, in your opinion?
That they live at a business? That's probably unlikely.
So when a business owner pays the taxes that they pay, the city takes the income from that and doesn't necessarily have the additional expense of a student in school? Is that correct?
If it's not an owner-occupied business, they could be owner-occupied and have children in the schools or not.
Business owners pay, I'm sorry, do the city cover the trash removal costs for businesses?
Trash removal, I do know that businesses pay for their own trash removal.
Okay. And obviously residents pay too, but the city subsidizes some of that. Is that your understanding?
Most residential do pay, but depending on the number of units. I live in a condominium building, and once you have a certain number of units, you pay for your own trash as well.
Mike Hale has told us in the past that the amount of money that people pay for trash bags doesn't cover the city's cost. I just see that businesses pay 100% of the trash removal where residents don't pay 100% of the trash removal. The city covers a portion of that. When you have a property like the Halyard valued at $60 million that gets developed and added to the tax evaluation, how could we use our tax classification policy to adjust for something like that? Or should we even be in the business of adjusting our tax factor based on what happens in the general marketplace of business and residential?
I'm not quite sure I understand your question. Halyard is part of the residential class, so the value is in there. And at a factor of one, it would be picking up its fair share in terms of based on value. Any shift that occurs, if there were a shift to the CIP class, whatever savings would come their way, they would get the same type of savings that any residential taxpayer would get.
Just that we heard the conversation about the evaluations have gone up, but part of that evaluations are, evaluations are new growth.
Yes.
$60 million Halyard on the residential side, that's not that everyone's evaluation went up, valuation went up, but there's the additional new growth that adds to the total levy that we see in this chart. Is that correct?
It is. And then the Halyard themselves, their assessed value, they're basically carrying that growth because it's in their value and it's going to be multiplied by the tax rate.
Exactly. So they're covered, they're covering their own expenses, but I'm just saying in terms of the evaluation, we can't control using tax factor, the tax factor, whether or not a new development happens.
No.
And that change, the development is what changes these numbers more than anything else.
It's a combination of market and development. Sometimes it's, you know, some of the new growth are when people maybe convert a multifamily to condominium units. You're going to see more value for several individual entities. Sometimes it's lot splits. You also see it on the commercial side. You know, there was recently an industrial building that was converted to condominium. So new growth in any class is new construction, or it could be something new that's taxable for the first time based on a conversion, new personal property accounts, things of that nature.
So I think what I'm hearing is that it would be difficult in retrospect to use tax classification as a way to adjust evaluations or the total levy. I don't think that those would actually correlate in any meaningful way.
The tax, tax classification is really to determine the portion of the levy that each class is going to pay. The values are the values. That's what's been approved by the Department of Revenue.
Thank you very much. I have one more question, or I could probably just work it into my testimony, like one more question than for Nancy. We saw the average numbers, but I'd asked earlier, I don't know if you have it off the top of your head, what would be the median tax savings for a property owner, residential property owner, if we did a shift from 1.00 to 1.03? Do you remember the email that you sent to me?
Are you talking about median residential value?
Median residential tax bill.
No, I don't think I, I know I gave you some information about median residential values and savings based on the shift versus what CIP would, would pay.
The dollar number $11.97, sound familiar to you?
So that is what you're speaking of. Yes, I have it here somewhere.
The shift of 1.03 would save the median residential taxpayer less than $12.
Correct.
Year end. Okay. So, and in that case, the median business owner would absorb additional expenses of $136.42.
Yes.
Save $11.97.
It's very similar to page 10. The values are a little bit different.
Yeah, I asked for the medians versus, she gave the median.
This was residential value that Counselor Worthley asked for, not single family, per se.
Yeah, but, good. She gave the, she gave the median number, and you can just do the math pretty simply there.
She gave me some other additional information I want to share with the council. So $11.97 was the dollar amount saved by the median homeowner with a shift of 1.03. Is that correct, Nancy?
It's median residential value, so that includes vacant land, single families, apartments, anything that's in the residential class.
Thank you for that. I have no more questions for Nancy. Appreciate it.
Question, Bell.
So I've got just some questions to make sure that I'm understanding this. And Grace, if you wouldn't mind putting up page number 10, because it seems to be a popular one. But in looking at the mean values that you've given us in one of the other pages, a single family home that is the most popular one is a mean value of $948,000, which is an increase of 3.36%, right? And we have, there are 7,244 people in Gloucester that have a house of that value, right? So it's 3.36% increase in mean value.
You're looking, Counselor Gilman, at the mean and median pages at the back?
I am.
So basically, the parcel, the property class column to the far left, the parcel count is the total number of single families.
Right.
The mean value is just the average of all those values. So I'm not necessarily saying there's a certain number at that value. That's just the average of all single families divided by the total number.
Okay.
So with waterfront parcels that we have, you know, we have a lot of things on the upper end. That's why the mean is higher than the median. The median being the 668,800 is probably a better indicator, but this is also not saying specifically how many of those there are. It's the midpoint. So you're going to have equal amounts below and above. That's 668,800.
Okay. But if we, if we do use that, and then we look back at page 10, and we look to 1.03.
Yes.
Basically, that's very close to 948,000, which is the average mean value, the mean value, right?
Yes, you could look at either column, the 750 or the million.
Okay. So let's, let's look at a million, because 948 is closest to the million. And what we're seeing in this chart is that if you, if your house is worth that much money or valued at that much money, and we go with the 1.03, we're going to be, that particular taxpayer will be saving $15 per year.
On the $750,000 home, on the million, it would be a $20 savings.
Okay. So that, so that's, that's the savings.
Yes.
Now, if we were to take a look at the commercial, which the average is 1.227, and there are 304, the mean is, right, which is a 2.9% increase. So if you, if you look at that and you bring that down to this chart again, the same chart on page 10, what we're saying is that particular commercial owner, of which there are 304 in Gloucester, they're, they're going to have to pay $217 more a year.
If their property value was 750. So when you're looking at the mean, the closest thing we have on this chart is the million. So if you just went over to the far right, commercial property with a value of a million would be paying an extra $290 on an annual basis.
Okay. Those questions are just kind of helpful to look at it in terms of what the averages are. So I just wanted to make sure that I understood this.
No problem. You're welcome.
Counselor Gro.
A question, Nancy. Do you know offhand sort of the average new growth we've had in the last, say, seven years?
And you're talking about tax dollars, I assume?
Whatever the growth calculation is, yeah.
So this year was a little bit higher because of what we talked about with the personal property, and it's about close to 1.4, 1.378. And that's also on that page seven with the calculation of the maximum allowable levy. The prior year, this is all classes, prior year was a million one, which is closer to what I kind of expected this year with, if that personal property blip didn't occur. The prior year was 1.3. In fiscal '22, it was 1.6.
That's the increase in tax development.
That's the tax dollars of new growth, not the value.
You know offhand what the, what the valuation, say, for residential was in 2018 versus 2025?
No, no, I don't.
Would you be surprised to learn we have valued that by four, an increase in $4 billion in the residential side?
I know it's gone up considerably.
And in the commercial and industrial, the CIP in general, has gone up 278 million over that same period of time. I'm just making the point that, that again, that residential seems to be clipping along at a much higher rate, including with Halyard, but Halyard was, could be considered a kind of a blip in the residential component, as was the national grid and utilities and the, in the personal property, right? I mean, that's not typical.
No.
Thank you.
More questions? Close the public hearing? Committee report. Yes, please.
Okay, committee report. On motion of Council Memhart, seconded by myself, the Budget and Finance Committee voted by roll call, three in favor, zero opposed, to recommend the city council adopt a residential tax classification factor of .997200 that equates to a CIP shift of 1.03 for fiscal year 2025, and I so move.
Motion made by Counselor Worthley, seconded by Counselor Majota.
Counselor President.
Discussion.
I'd like to make a motion to amend that number to 1.18.
1.18? That's correct. Okay. There's a motion on the table. Anyone who wants to second it?
Second.
Okay, motion made, motion for the amendment made by Counselor Gro, seconded by Counselor Benson.
On the, on the amendment?
On the amendment.
As, as I've already made, made the case, I think, in the As I've already made the case, I think, in my questions, the residential component of our tax base is clipping along at a much higher pace than commercial, industrial, and personal property. I think, and I made this point last year, that we ought to be sort of trying to skew our rates to a ratio of 90-10, which has been our historic average for the last 20-something years. A move to 1.18 would be a dramatic shift compared to what we've been doing at 1.03, which I think frankly is such a token as to be pointless. And I expect that I'll be voting against a 1.03 shift, basically just on the principle. But I guess my point on this is that what I hear on a regular basis through phone calls, people in the street, social media, is residents are feeling taxed out. And even though this is not a tremendous savings for any additional resident, you know, we like, I hear it all the time in this council, every little bit helps. You know, if we can help the residents, we're going to help the residents. Well, here's a chance where we help the residents. And shifting that to the commercial, industrial, I agree, it feels extreme. But if you look at historically over the last seven, eight years, they are paying effectively less taxes than they have been paying a year on, if you factor in not only the fact that their rates have stayed the same, and their valuations have not gone up very much, but also inflation factors. So they're actually getting a tax savings that we are not affording residents. And I'm happy to be corrected on that for the numbers. I think we need to make a statement at some point that we need to rebalance the scales a little bit and move it so that residential component remains around 90 percent, CIP remains about 10 percent, and adjust it annually as things change. Next year, the valuations for residential might go up again significantly. I expect they probably will. That means that more of the tax burden is going to be shouldered by the residents. It's just math. So while the valuations, we tax on valuation, the effective rates for CIP continue to go down or stay the same. And, you know, while I appreciate the arguments that we've got to be there for the small businesses and all, the fact of the matter is, is that we have been. We've done this by allowing the residential tax rate and shift to go, or valuations to continue to go up unaddressed by a tax shift. So that's my proposal. I don't particularly expect a lot of support from it, but I just want to make the point.
Thank you. Counselor Benson?
With this, and me entertaining, seconding. Could you tell me, like, what's the rough estimate that we could, from your proposal, how much residents could save, like a number? Could you give like a-
It's right here. It's on the page. It's about $135, $100.
It's on page nine.
My point really is, is that-
1.15 is and 1.20 is. So you'd have to go in between that.
That was my, that's what, was if you had like a rough.
Yeah. They don't do the individual. You'd have to do the math.
Well, I got a C in there. Just kidding.
They've actually, they've actually put it out here. It's on the chart. Comes down to about 1.5 or 6 million savings on the residential side, and probably a-
Counsel, could we put this up so the public can understand what we're talking about? Can we put this slide up?
Shift factor of 1.2 would be about $135. So it'll be a little less than that.
So you're on page nine right now?
I'm on page 10.
10. Okay, you're on page 10.
Oh, nine. You're right, nine. So there is no 1.18. There's a 1.15 and a 1.20.
On page 10, if you look at page 10, you can get a shift of 1.2 extrapolate downwards.
Shift 1.2, 100, you're looking at, um, yeah, but I don't know 1.20. Value of $500,000, $90 savings for 1.2. And then you just, a little bit would be significantly depending on the math.
Depending on the math. But my point is, is that, the argument is that we're penalizing commercial businesses with the shift that we're doing at 1.03, when in fact, they've been getting effectively a shift in their favor by the fact that evaluations, I mean, it's not, we're not shifting it, but the shift in the value of the residential property has skewed upwards so much so that residential, industrial properties are effectively paying the same, or if not less, taxes than they were eight years ago.
Counselor Worthley.
Thank you. I'm not going to get into back and forth with Counselor to my left. I just think there's a question of economics that's missing, an understanding of economics that's missing. Okay? We could save $15 or $11 for a resident who loses their job, okay? If a Varian decided to go to Beverly in the Coming Center, for example, where they have access to more employees, they have better roads, they have better school system in terms of rankings, we would lose hundreds of millions of dollars of income to residents. We want to talk about making this shift and using tax classification to make this shift. What we need to do is we need to draw more businesses here. And how do we do that? We have to have the tools to do that. And we are at a disadvantage being at the beginning of the line or the end of the line, depending how you look at it, where a third, sorry, two-thirds of our radius is water. So if you're trying to have a business locate here, and you say, well, your nearest group of employees are in Gloucester, but beyond that, you've got to go from Boston to get people that might be qualified for high-paying jobs, well, that's a disadvantage. They're going to pay more money for those same employees than someone might have to do in Burlington, or Woburn, or Beverly. So because we're at a disadvantage, we shouldn't make it harder for businesses by taxing them more. We should work the opposite angle and say, what can we do to bring more businesses here, to provide the residents that we care so much about, to save $11 or $12, to provide them jobs? I don't think we just discount the value of a good-paying job in Gloucester to save someone $11. It's not fair. So we want to talk about equity. We should be at 1.00. The reason why I made the recommendation of 1.03, and that was the motion that was on the table, is so that we wouldn't get into this random bingo game of just throwing out numbers.
Let's not editorialize, please.
Okay. That's why I put forward the motion of 1.03, where the mayor recommended it. It was the same as last year. I don't like it at all. I'd rather be at 1.00, but I'm also looking at what's likely to be palatable to this council. This other math makes no sense, because it's not what drives businesses to decide to locate here. Anyway, the last thing on this for me, and I'm not going to get into it, is-
Thank you.
When someone owns value, the value goes up, they own that equity. So the value is the value. That's what Mr. Pappas says. So when the value goes up, a resident owns that equity. Yes, they're taxed on it, but they own the equity. Thank God they do. Okay. I've said my piece.
Counselor Grow.
Just want to point out a couple corrections. First off, the motion on the table is the amendment. But secondly, as you pointed out, that we run the risk of losing businesses to places like Beverly, or Danvers, or puberty, all of which shift at 1.5, and in some of them, 1.65. The current commercial industrial rate in Beverly right now is $21.94 per thousand, which is more than twice what we're talking about doing here. I'm looking at it right now.
It's not because there's more value, there are more businesses that are adding to that value, so the shift-
No back and forth, please.
Commercial industrial rate is $21.94 per thousand.
We're not talking about, you know, let's, I mean-
I'm saying, he's making the point, if I could, the council's making the point, that we run the risk of businesses in Gloucester relocating to Beverly, where they'll be paying twice as much in property taxes.
Okay, thank you. Any more discussion on the motion? I mean, the amendment. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oh, no.
On the amendment?
No, 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 sorry.
Can we do a roll call on the amendment?
All right, do a roll call.
No.
Counselor Grace?
No.
Counselor Gross?
No.
Counselor Grow?
Yes.
Counselor Worthley?
No.
Counselor Benson?
No.
The vote is one in favor, six opposed. I'm sorry. Where are you on here?
Big Tony.
I'm sorry. Counselor Majota?
No.
How could we forget you?
I'm quiet tonight.
The vote is one in favor, seven opposed, two absent. The motion fails.
Okay. Now, back to the main motion. Discussion.
I'd like to discuss that.
Oh, sorry. Counselor Gilman?
So, I appreciate that we had a good conversation, and it's really important that we looked at these numbers to understand it. So that's a positive thing. And I am sensitive to the fact that our commercial businesses continue to shrink, which is not a good thing. But my personal feeling on why I'm going to support this at 1.03 is that if our residents don't have a perception that they cannot afford to live here anymore, they're going to spend less money in the businesses and in the restaurants. And so I think where a lot of our businesses have folks that also live here, I think somehow it will kind of equalize in terms of where they benefit and where they don't. And so I'm going to be going with the recommendation from administration and sticking with the 1.03. Thanks.
Counselor Grow.
This is going to be counterintuitive. I'm going to actually oppose the 1.03, primarily because I think it's kind of a pointless gesture. The reality is, is that in the very near future, we're very likely looking at, talking about tax increases and a property tax override. And what you're going to find out is that the residential component is going to come out in force. Many people will support the concept of raising taxes, especially to help settle contracts. But a lot of people are going to come out and talking about how they can't afford to live here anymore. The $15, I don't think, makes a difference one way or the other. And I don't think it makes that much difference, frankly, in the commercial, industrial, personal property range either. But I think just on principle, I think I'm just going to go vote on the 1.0.
Thank you. You know, Gloucester is, with the decline of the waterfront, has really suffered on its commercial side. And basically, like it or not, we've become much more of a bedroom community where the tax base falls solely on the residents. And it does so quite a bit here. So that's it. I mean, just our real problem is that we don't have enough commercial property to be able to help us, help relieve the burden off the, and that's it. That's the only place I was going, is that's the real, the real difficulty. Counselor Benson?
Thank you. On principle, I will be opposing this, because I think that we, I would like to go even lower to supporting our business community that is, we're trying to get growth, and we are seeing numbers continue to decline. We are going to continue to see crisis arise in the coming years. We're going to see homes continue to deal with differences with getting insurance, because we're going to see homeowners' insurance crisis happening in coastal communities. This is going to be affecting us, and I think as we consider what's happening-
Counselor, I'd like to remind you that this is a majority vote.
Mm-hmm.
It'll die if you and Counselor Grow. Just wanted to remind you of that.
Okay.
It's not a simple majority.
So on that, you're, just on that point, if I may, you're saying it's five of the full council, or four of the-
Full council. Six.
So it's six. Five.
Oh, five. Okay. Sorry.
Sorry. I want to make sure, I know what, I just wanted people to know what- So do I. I want to know what it is, so.
It's five.
Just five.
The President? Can we have clarification on the ramifications of this, please?
Yes. Nancy, can you, I mean, it's too bad the city auditor isn't available tonight.
I was advised by the city auditor that if this particular motion fails, you have to keep on voting until you can settle on a tax classification factor, as well as a CIP shift.
Counselor Majota?
Could we postpone it until we get more?
A lot more information.
No, not more, sorry. Counselors, we're missing two.
I'm going to withdraw my objection to the 1.03.
Thank you. There's major ramifications as far as the state and our reporting and all that.
Absolutely. That's why I wanted to make sure we're all here.
Yeah, no, I don't think we can wait two weeks.
Okay.
That's, if I'm remembering correctly, we were informed of that by the auditor at BNF.
We do a roll call?
Roll call, Madam Clerk. On the motion.
We reread the motion, just so we can make sure that we're completely clear on what the motion is.
On a motion by Counselor Memard, seconded by Counselor Worthley, the Budget and Finance Committee voted by roll call, three in favor, zero opposed, to recommend that the City Council adopt a residential tax classification factor of .997200 that equates to a commercial, industrial, personal property shift of 1.03 for fiscal year '25.
Counselor Gilman?
Yes.
Counselor Grace?
Yes.
Counselor Gross?
Yes.
Counselor Grow?
Yes.
Counselor Majota?
Yes.
Counselor Worthley?
Yes.
Counselor Benson?
No.
The vote is six in favor, one opposed, two absent.
Entertaining motion to reconsider?
So moved.
We have a second?
Second.
A motion made by Counselor Worthley, seconded by Counselor Majota. We can just do this by a simple vote, or we want to do it by roll call? Roll call.
No.
You've got to wait till you're called.
Was I a premature no? I'll wait for you to call. I'll be crazy. I'm sorry.
Sounds like me tonight.
Sorry. I'm so excited being first.
Counselor Gilman?
No.
Counselor Grace?
No.
Counselor Gross?
No.
Counselor Grow?
No.
Counselor Majota?
No.
Counselor Worthley?
No.
Counselor Benson?
No.
Motion to reconsider fails, zero in favor, seven opposed, two absent.
Next order of business, Madam Clerk.
Thank you.
Oh, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Public hearing, 2024, number 31, RZ 2024, number four, Council Order 2024, number 21, amend Gloucester zoning ordinance, section 5.7.4, planning board review, and section 5.7.5D, special permit criteria, City Council, regarding adding third-party independent review requirements.
Well, Counselor Nolan was going to talk to these, but we, it was put forward that we stiffen up or make more clear the third-party review, because as you'll see in, oh, sorry. Open the public hearing. As you can see in the motion, that it was, not in the motion, but it was just a one short sentence in the planning board's major projects, zoning ordinance. It was not referenced really anywhere else where we actually, City Council has the power. So it was just made clear in this motion, which is major projects. And I guess, just the motion right here. Oh, right, 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 yep. So- So, we are asking anyone who would like to speak in favor. I just did.
Somebody online.
I don't see anyone. We did get a, we did get a nice letter from Grant Clark.
We do the opposition first.
Well, I'm just saying he was in favor. I'm dealing with the in-favor part. And now, we will go for anyone speaking in opposition.
The hand that was, who was in favor, opposition, Linda McCarron.
She just raised it, yeah.
Hey, Linda. You can speak either in favor or in opposition. Is there Linda?
She's muted still.
Linda, you're muted.
Sorry. Is that better?
Yes.
Actually, at the last second, you said anyone was objecting to it. And I had sort of decided that I would contribute my maybe ignorant thoughts before that. I think.
Yeah, you can speak in favor also.
I would like to speak in favor just because I think, especially if we have, if we have such people who are truly neutral, are truly not part of, you know, of the group that tends to be, well, the group that takes responsibility for making decisions. I think an outside observer, an outside evaluator, an outside critic or enquirer would just looks and feels better than, than just running it back through someone that has already been part of the process or no one at all. And I am not deeply informed about any of this, but I've been involved in trying to help someone just, you know, hack her way through paperwork and rules and laws and ordinances and things. And wherever I have seen that, it has always felt to me like a breath of fresh air. And I would contribute that as something to be considered in whether or not it would be a nice change to make or an addition to make. That's all. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Linda. Anyone else which should speak in favor or in opposition? Okay, do we have any communications?
I have not received any.
Do the counselors have any questions? Okay, I'm going to close the public, oh, yeah, sure.
So, can you, so one of the communications was the one that we got, was it not? Or was it not there in time?
Remember, we, right.
Was not there, that's why you mentioned. Got it. Thank you. Sorry to bring that up.
All right. Now, I'm going to close the public hearing. So, again, the committee report, which I just gave when I was speaking in favor.
Actually.
Do you want us to do it, P and D?
Want me to give it?
Give the committee report?
Yeah.
Sure.
On a motion, Counselor Gilman, seconded by Counselor Benson, Planning and Development voted three in favor, zero opposed, to recommend the Gloucester zoning ordinance, section 5.7, major projects be amended as follows. Section 5.74, planning board review. Fourth with, upon their receipt, one copy of major project applications and plans submitted to the City Council for approval shall be transmitted by the city clerk to the planning board for their review and report regarding the special permit criteria below. The planning board may, when they deem it advisable, engage professional assistance at the applicant's expense for such review and report. Add, consideration should be given as to whether review by a third-party independent consultant pursuant to general law, chapter 44, section 53G, would be appropriate due to the complexity of the application, plans submitted, and specific subject matter expertise required to thoroughly and review the application. And section 5.7.5D, special permit criteria, City Council, all other requirements of the zoning ordinance and of all applicable building codes must have been satisfied. Add, consideration should be given as to whether review by a third-party independent consultant pursuant to general law, chapter 44, section 53G, would be appropriate due to the complexity of the application, plans submitted, and specific subject matter expertise require, and, sorry, excuse me, and specific subject matter expertise required to thoroughly review the application. Specific attention is drawn to the requirements of the subdivision control law and the necessity of obtaining occupancy permits prior to the occupancy of any building or portion thereof. And I so move.
Second.
Motion made by Counselor Grow and seconded by Counselor Gilman because she had her microphone.
There you go. On the motion?
Discussion.
On the motion, if I could. Discussions at P and D and with City Solicitor Suzanne Egan, who wrote and supported this change. This is literally belts and suspenders in terms of drawing more attention to the fact that third-party review may and would probably be likely in complicated plans. There was some question about whether or not the existing ordinances were a little vague on whether that would be a requirement or should be expected to be a requirement. So, this language effectively clarifies that for applicants moving forward. And with that in mind, I support this moving through the council.
Counselor Worthley.
Yes, thank you. This started as a result of some advocacy from residents that were at a Ward 5 meeting, specifically Grant Clark, Dennis McKirk, and Preserve West Gloucester Group. There's a meeting that Counselor Nolan asked me to fill in for because he couldn't make it. And then, there was a secondary meeting after that where Counselor Gross and Counselor Nolan were there, and I applaud them for pushing this forward. I took the minutes and would have been happy to have been a co-sponsor of this. But this has really been an advocacy from residents themselves who have found that oftentimes, partly because of where our process is, where we don't open discussion up to all parties until maybe a final public hearing, but where a developer might have his or her lineup of professionals, whose job it is, is to help get a permit. And oftentimes, the city has volunteers on boards and commissions who aren't necessarily experts in every field to give them the authority to have outside third-party review. Not all development is good development. Not all testimony is accurate testimony. This isn't a chance to have a third party come forward and say, no, the wastewater plan isn't going to do what the developer is expecting. This isn't going to work the way as outlined. And it gives the boards, at least the planning board and the zoning board, the authority to hire a third-party, a third party to review this at the applicant's expense. So, this would not be an additional expense, but it would give neighborhoods an opportunity to have a little bit more of a fair playing field. And so, I was happy to be at those meetings. I congratulate Counselor Gross and Nolan in bringing this forward and appreciate the vote from Planning Development to recommend this, and I'll be supporting it.
Thank you. More discussion? I'd just like to say that I have noticed, and not just from Preserve, well before Preserve West Gloucester even existed, so before that meeting, I'd like to beg to differ that that's where it came from. Because I have considered watching, you know, three decades of zoning board of appeals meetings mostly, where the lawyer for the applicant was asked about significant issues that were there. And I was like, what is this? What is going on here? And when this avenue came forward to be able to make sure that it's emphasized that this needs to be done and it can be asked of, you know, when there's, if anybody notices that there's been, you know, conflicting facts, facts that have been presented, they can call the mayor's office or the city councilors and say, look, we, we want to have this put in. And it also is a, an advantage to the applicant to know that this expense is going to come up on their thing. The reason it doesn't say in here that it's at the owner's expense is because general law, chapter 44, section 5, 53G, is exactly what that is. So, that's what that, that's what that states, is that the applicant shall fund these, these third-party reviews.
The President?
Yep.
I could correct my statement, which you did, but I'd like to just clarify that. This has been a problem for, you said 30 years. It's been probably for as long as we've had a zoning code, it's been a problem. And look, not all attorneys are bad attorneys, right? Some people are doing the right thing, but sometimes they run the meeting and there isn't an opportunity for residents to oppose it with data. And this would be a way to help. The reason why I recognize Preserve West Gloucester is because they brought it to our attention at the ward meeting that Counselor Nolan had. It's been a problem for a long, long time. And as the letter that came in today from Dennis, from Grant Clark, said, this is just a step and it could be a more robust review, but this is putting it on the books or clarifying what's on the books. But you're right, this has been going on for a long, long time. Thank you.
And, you know, and it wasn't even in the City Council's special permit criteria. But as we've seen at 20 Main Street, the city attorney has insisted on third-party reviews for almost everything.
Point out though, I could, just clarifying the clarifying, it does actually say in the existing GZO that it's going to be at the applicant's expense. And this has been an option for the planning board and the ZBA to do, whether they have done it appropriately over the years or not, it is an option that exists. This language is great in bolding that possibility. But again, it doesn't actually require that it happen.
Oh, it does not. But, you know, the sentence that you're referencing has said that the planning board may, when they deem it advisable, engage professional assistance at the applicant's expense. That doesn't really, you know, that people don't understand what that means, so.
Say we vote it.
Yep. Roll call vote. Two-thirds majority required.
Counselor Gilman.
Yes.
Counselor Grace.
Yes.
Counselor Gross.
Yes.
Counselor Grow.
Yes.
Counselor Majota.
Yes.
Counselor Worthley.
Yes.
Counselor Benson.
Yes.
Vote is seven in favor, zero opposed, two absent. The motion passes.
Next, Counselor Grow.
Public hearing?
Um, no. Oh, next public hearing. Open the public hearing, I went straight down to the committee recommendation. Sorry.
No speaking in favor and opposed, so go right to the.
I don't see anyone with a hand up. There's no hands up.
Can I just read what the public hearing is? Okay. Public hearing 2024 number 32, RZ 2024 number five, Council Order 2024 number 22, to amend the Gloucester zoning ordinance, section 5.9, cluster development, section 5.9.32, review by other boards by adding a new subsection A, review by independent consultants.
In favor, opposed, communications, questions?
Yep. Communications? None.
So, no one's speaking in favor and no one's speaking in opposition? And the public hearing was opened at 9:15? Okay, we have no, I have not received any communications.
All right, questions from the counselors? Close the public hearing. Committee report.
Committee report, and a motion of Counselor Gilman, seconded by Counselor Benson, Planning and Development Committee voted three in favor, zero opposed, recommend that the Gloucester zoning ordinance, section 5.9, cluster development, section 5.9.3.2, review by other boards be amended by adding a new subsection A as follows. Add, A, review by independent consultants. The planning board should consider whether, due to the complexity of the application, plans submitted and specific subject matter expertise required to thoroughly review the application, retaining a third-party independent consultant pursuant to general law, 44, section 53G, would facilitate the review process, and I so move.
Second.
Motion made by Counselor Gross, seconded by Counselor Gilman. Discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote.
Counselor Gilman.
Yes.
Counselor Grace.
Yes.
Counselor Gross.
Yes.
Counselor Grow.
Yes.
Counselor Majota.
Yes.
Counselor Worthley.
Yes.
Counselor Benson.
Aye.
The vote is seven in favor, zero opposed, two absent. The motion passes.
Thank you. Can you explain to us this next motion? Because we've never had a motion to reconsider this council, most of this council.
So, within 24 hours of a council vote, a counselor can move to reconsider a vote. And when they do that, the counselor needs to notify the city clerk's office, who in turn notifies the city council. And the matter is taken up at the next city council meeting. So, Counselor Benson submitted a motion to reconsider the city council vote of October 22 regarding the public hearing for amending chapter five, building and building regulations. So, Counselor Benson needs to make a motion to reconsider that vote. If the council does not move to do that, does not second that, then the motion dies and the vote stays as is. And if you do choose to consider the reconsideration, then you would be revoting your vote.
If someone does give it a second, do we go through the, on the reconsideration? Do we first go through the no and yes votes on that?
First, you need to entertain if you are all in agreement to reconsider the vote, just like we did with the loan order. I mean, I'm sorry, with the tax classification.
So, it's the usual yes or no.
Yeah.
So, if we don't want to reconsider, we vote no.
Correct.
And if you want to reconsider, you vote yes.
Correct.
Okay. Counselor Benson.
I wanted to correct the record and say that I had originally meant to say nay to this. And then, I just, it wasn't clear. I must have not have said it loud enough, but I wanted to correct the record that I meant to vote no on this.
On all of it?
On all of it. Due to, right now, right now, with the cost of living crisis, I will not be supporting fee increases. So, just right, so with businesses and everything, I just can't.
Just a point of order. Do we need to get a motion on the table to reconsider?
Yeah. That's the reason why I wanted to.
That's why I said, make your motion first.
Yeah. So, my motion to reconsider the vote to correct the record, that is why.
No.
Right, here's a motion.
Okay. Okay. Okay, yep. A motion to re.
The motion to reconsider.
Motion for reconsideration. Benson, City Council vote of 10/22/2024 regarding PH 2024-33, amend GZO, chapter five, building, GZO, building and building regulations, section 5-15, building permit fees, subsection A, B, D, E, F, G, H, and J, and amend section 5-44, fees for electrical work, and amend GZO, chapter, GCO, chapter 26, weights and measures, section 26-2, collection of fees by sealer, and disposition thereof. And I so move.
Second.
Motion made by Counselor Benson, seconded by Counselor Grow. We can only discuss the reconsideration of the motion. No discussion? Should we do a roll call vote on this?
Just a question. If he's just trying to change his vote to no, do we need to vote yes to reconsider so he can vote no? We could vote yes on the main motion again? And do we have that main motion?
I think we may have to go through them all, though, won't we? We have to go through all the motions again?
Well, there was one motion that was made, and then there was a, the full ordinance amendment was behind it. So, it's not like you're going through each section individually.
Okay, got it. Got it, got it. Okay. Roll call. Remember, remember which the votes mean.
So, on the motion to reconsider, Counselor Gilman.
No.
Counselor Grace.
No.
Counselor Gross.
No.
Counselor Grow.
No.
Counselor Majota.
No.
Counselor Worthley.
Yes.
Counselor Benson.
Yes.
Just, give a little support.
The vote is two in favor, five opposed, two absent. To reconsider, the motion to reconsider fails.
Thank you.
You're on the record. Nobody's ever going to look at that again.
We have, next order of business, I guess, well, next on, for council vote, we have a speedway limit petition for Salt Island. a speedway limit petition for Salt Island Road. Would someone like to read the motion?
I move the vote to refer this petition to the Mayor and Traffic Commission for review and approval in accordance with GCO's chapter 21, section 21, as 88, and Mass General Law, chapter 90, section 18.
Thank you. So this is.
Give me a second.
Second.
Motion made by Grow, councillor Gilman, seconded. So this vote, this vote, these are, Salt Island Road's private road, and they can set their speed limit with a city council vote, and they don't have to go to the state to petition permission to set the speed limit. So this is, this is quite helpful for everyone who is burdened on private, private ways.
I do have a question.
Yep.
It was to 15 miles an hour, correct?
Correct.
I don't, I don't see that in the narrative, or in the.
It's in the petition.
Okay. I, I read it, I just don't, don't see it on our template. Thank you.
We're only voting to send it to the mayor and the.
Right, I understand. I used to live there, so I, I get it. I get the 15 miles an hour.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, well, they had to get approval of a majority of the residents. All right.
President, if I may, why wouldn't we just have this on the consent agenda to refer to the committee and to the mayor? Do we have to do it as a separate vote for any particular reason, or is just?
We had it on the consent agenda last time.
Send to the Traffic Commission?
I mean, because this is the second time, yes.
The reason this is appearing, if it looks familiar to you, it's because at the last city council meeting, it was on the consent agenda to refer to a future city council meeting for council vote, because that's kind of how the city ordinance makes it look. But when I went into the Mass General Law, it actually spells out that it needs to be referred to, um, the mayor and the Traffic Commission need to approve it. And then once that approval comes, I think it was, went to O&amp;A? I don't, I'm sorry, I don't remember where it was referred to the first time.
Yeah, it went to O&amp;A.
So once O&amp;A gets it, they're going to wait for the, um, the recommendation from the mayor and the Traffic Commission, and then you can move ahead and vote on it.
Or just voting to refer this.
So for future conditions like this, we should just send it to O&amp;A, the mayor and the Traffic Commission?
Okay.
Thank you.
Found that out. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. The ayes have it, seven to nothing with two absent.
President, I'd like to vote to refer this petition to, oh, sorry, you should have announced it.
Please, uh, private ways speed limit petition for Paul Free Road.
Vote to refer, uh, motion to refer this petition to the Mayor and Traffic Commission for review and approval in accordance with GCO, chapter 21, section 21-88, and Mass General Law, chapter 90, section 18, and I so move.
Second.
Motion made by Council Grow, seconded by Council Worthley. I thought you got in there first, but we'll change that to seconded by Council Gilman.
Thank you. For your point, to me.
All right. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion passes seven to zero with two absent. Now, we have individual councillors' discussion, including reported, well, we don't have any reports. So we have councillors' discussion, and then later we'll get to, there is none, I guess, we have none. So we're going right to councillors' request to the mayor. Council Gilman?
Thank you, I like being first.
While we go, yeah, that's right.
So I, I have one request to the mayor through the chair. I would like to ask that, under Communication to City Council, section 3-8, I would like to request that we have a presentation in front of the council on an overview of Prop two and a half and the status of our financial situations in the city. And it can be at the beginning of a meeting, just a simple presentation, it can be short and sweet, but I think it would be helpful, because a lot of people are talking about Prop two and a half and what that means, and I think it would be helpful to get an update on what it means. And, and so I'm requesting that we have that at whatever meeting council president feels that we can fit that in.
Well, that would be at the, whatever the administration can come, come forward with that.
It's simple, I think Kenny, I think Kenny and, and, you know, I, but whatever. That's my recommendation, we can talk about the specifics.
So, I mean, they would get back to me, and then we put it on.
Yeah, and Council Worthley had also brought up a need for a meeting similar to this, and he was talking more about the budget, but this is kind of part of the budget, but it's, it's really something that, we keep talking about it, and people, I think it would be helpful for all of us to get grounded again in what that means and, and what the numbers are for different incremental amounts of money, like we did when we approved the East Veterans School. We understood what the rate was going to be, how much it would burden the taxpayers, et cetera. So that's it, thank you.
Okay. Council Grace?
Yeah, um, I wanted to just show, give a thank you to the Traffic Commission, to Mike Hale and his crew for, um, so very, very quickly getting the stop sign at the end of Acacia Street where it meets Grove Street, and also the handicap sign on Acacia Street. It was literally up within a couple of days, very fast work, thank you. And also thank you to Mike and his crew for getting the school zone signs on Centennial Avenue. I think it will make, it's, you know, it's, it was very, very important, I think, and the residents appreciate having that, you know, kind of bright yellow reminder to slow it down a little bit coming down that hill by the high school. And my request to the mayor is if we could instill a bit more urgency and, and just, you know, proactive stance on applying the laws that we pass here in regard to safety, as in parking on sidewalks and parking on crosswalks. We have so much discussion in the last year and a half about having this be a walkable city, but it's not a walkable city if you have to walk in the middle of the street because the sidewalks are all clogged with boats on trailers and cars and trucks and whatnot. So that's my request, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I want to, I want to second Council Gilman's request for a primer on chapter two and a half, levy override. I think it's something we're going to be talking about more in the coming weeks as we, as we see the progress on the teacher negotiations and the parent negotiations. And also bring up, glad she brought up the idea of perhaps maybe having a quarterly review of where we are on revenue and expenses. There's a lot of talk in, in the public about how we can just find the money in the existing budget. I don't necessarily agree to that, with that perspective. I think that we've, we've passed a pretty lean budget, but I think it's important to get a sense of where we are with, with the, with finances of the city at this point in the game, because sooner or later, that contract is going to come down, and we're going to have to deal with how to pay for it, which is fine. I'm, I'm happy to do that. It would be awful nice to know where we stand with relation to what we actually have in-house in terms of our revenue expenditures, and also what, whether or not that would then require pursuing a levy override, and, and at that point, how much we'd be looking at doing. So the sooner we can do that, I think the better.
Thank you.
Council Majota?
No requests.
Council Worthley?
Yes, firstly, I would like to commend Grace Boyer and the clerk's office for a fantastic job yet again managing the hardest job, hardest, most demanding job in the city, especially with the election, and it was done flawlessly. Your staff is awesome. We didn't hear any discrepancies, I'm sorry, we were going to say something, we didn't hear any discrepancies, any concerns. You know, we're, we're grateful and blessed that you're leading the office, and your staff really deserve, and just pass it on to them how grateful we are for the work they did. Thank you. And I think it was a month ago, or maybe six weeks ago, I can't, I've lost track, but I did make that request to the mayor, and I kind of sensed that Council Gilman and Grow are agreeing with it, that, and I appreciate that too, that we should have some sort of a budget, sort of here, you know, preview of what's coming, even if it's just an overview that's general. When, on Thursday night, we had a Budget and Finance Committee meeting where we decided to postpone a review of where we are right now, but the review looks like we're, we're on track, and on track means possible surpluses like we've had over the last three years. I don't know, but.
We looked at that.
We decided we're going to go into detail at a future meeting, though we, we didn't go into great detail, line by line. It was on the agenda, but it was a long meeting, and we decided to move it forward in the week. But, you know, it was Thursday night, and the mayor says on Friday in some of his public relations, uh, press conferences, that there's a $4 to $7 million deficit, and they just want to be really careful, because some people have heard that there's money that's missing, okay, unaccounted for. It's, people have heard, I've heard people say that that's just gross overspending in one unidentified area, and it's really unfortunate that there's this misunderstanding of what that means. I think he's saying he's hearing or projecting that there'll be a $4 to $7 million deficit in the next year's budget, but I would like to think that the council that approves a budget and the Budget and Finance Committee would have access to that information. So I would really like to ask the mayor to do a presentation on what those numbers are, so we can all speak intelligently about it and not just sort of read about it on social media and then have to react to it. So that's my request. That's it for now, thank you.
Thank you. I just, I think to say that the, the Veteran Services Office, V and Brian, pulled off a, another fabulous, not fabulous, but really, really great, really wonderful, respectful Veterans Day service and wreath hanging, and Ruth Peano and Joey and Kukuru up at the Veterans, Vietnam Vet Memorial. I'd just like to thank them and recognize the fact that they, and we had a gorgeous day too, so that was, that was really a big plus.
Could I add, you did a fine job representing the mayor and the city at the ceremonies as well.
Which I didn't have to. It's kind of tough when you got a cold and things. Hey, oh, I know, but I'm not done. Sorry, Dylan, I meant, I should have called you first.
I know, I know, I know you don't like me today, that's.
Yeah, that's. You know that. Anyway, I just sent everybody that, that report that we got, which, one on the city side, it's 19 pages, and it just breaks it down by department, doesn't, to tell you what's, what's been spent, what hasn't been spent, and what they have for, in, in. Incumbrances. Thank you. Schools is just four, schools is just four pages. Council Benson?
I don't, I don't have anything, I concur with the council president on, on the Veterans Day, and we honor our veterans and their sacrifice to our community, our nation, so thank you all very much.
Thank you. Motion to adjourn. Second. Motion made by Council Grow, seconded by Council Worthley. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. All those opposed? Motion passes, seven to zero with two absences.